Solid.
Solid as a rock.
Counsel, we will call the meeting to order for the record. It is April twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one, at four thirty P. M. We will begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burnt.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Move that we adopt the agenda as published.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to adopt the agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Nay.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. Next item is consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
No changes to the consent agenda, so therefore I move that we approve the consent agenda for the mayor to sign and for the clerk to attest.
Second the motion.
I have a motion of second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the item is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda, so the next up will be department convention reports. So I will turn those over for the finance department annual report to Mr. LaVoy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Let me go and get the screens shared for you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, again, appreciate the opportunity to present to you the Finance Department Clerk's Department's annual report. It's crazy. It's been twelve months already since we've done this, but it's been an interesting twelve months, to say the least. So we're going to give you an overview of what we've been working on, what we do for you, and the road ahead. Again, I did provide this presentation to you a couple of weeks ago to kind of give you an idea of where we're going. There will be a few slides that I just jumped through since it's more informational purposes only. But feel free to please let me know if you have any questions during the presentation. Just want to make sure that I got the right screen shown. The screen did change pages for you. Perfect. Thank you very much. So the agenda today is we're going to discuss who we are, what we do for the city, expectations from us. I will talk about some of our successes over the last twelve months. And then we'll kind of touch on where we're going in the future and what we believe we need to work on for the city itself. So who are we? Again, we, 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 we hope they stop on by any time. Come visit us. We think we're a, a good, fun group of people to be with. We are a prideful group. We take a lot of pride in what we do. We've believe in it being ethical and transparent with all things that we work on. Again, we have an annual audit that tells us if we're doing a good job or bad job. Again, but these are some of the pictures that we took during the last twelve months. You know, COVID did create some problems with getting together, but we were able to sneak out one day and act as a group, and we had a good time engaging one another at Settlers Park. We felt that the game that we selected kind of fit the theme for two thousand and twenty. It was a, it was a tough one. But again, it was a creative game, so we had a good time at the park. You know, I think a lot of people are showing, you know, Zoom photos as your, you know, two thousand and twenty in review. This is our version of it. During our holiday event, we again weren't able to get together, but we engaged as much as we could. We tried to act as a team. You know, we, we're a pretty tight family. We like to have a good time. This particular screenshot is a memory from a game called Bean Boozled. Not sure if anybody's played it. We have never played it. It is, I, I'm be cautious if you do try this game. It's a Jelly Belly game that has both good flavors and bad flavors, and they're colored the same, so you don't know which one you're getting. Just looking at this picture, you can see that Sandra, myself, Jenny, Karen, we didn't do so well on the, on the bean that we picked. Jaime and Karen, or Jaime and Nancy obviously picked a good one. They're having a good, good time laughing at the fact that we picked the bad bean and we're eating it live. We did this for about ten beans, and we all said we're done because it got pretty painful. But again, we tried to have a good time, tried to keep that spirit going. But that's who we are. We're the Finance Department Clerk's Department. We have a good time, but we take our job very seriously. Just know, just let you know, and we do, you know, take a lot of pride what we provide you guys on a daily basis. This is the org chart. The Clerk's Department, I don't have listed. Chris will be providing you an annual report for the Clerk's Department in a couple of weeks. So again, I did show them on this. He will represent the Clerk's Department for us. And can't go on without saying that we do have a retirement coming up. Rita Cunningham, who are we? She's a big reason of who we are. And we'll talk about more about that on April twenty-eighth. Hopefully you'll be able to attend the event. But again, can't go on with saying who we are without saying Rita Cunningham is pretty much who we are, and you'll hear more about that on April twenty, twenty-eighth. So following the agenda, you know, what do we do for the city? This slide here kind of provides a general overview of what we provide the city from the Finance Department perspective. We have the utility billing division. We have the procurement division. We have an accounting division, and we have a budget and finance analytical division. So this slide kind of explains to you or shows you in a visual perspective what we do. Everything we do, we perform at the highest professional level that we can. The interactions that all of our team members engage in on a daily basis are pretty dynamic and simple at times, but they're usually pretty different. Every customer has a different need, and we must be flexible to meet those needs on a daily basis. As I spoke earlier, our goal is to deliver the highest level of customer service to all of our customers, which includes you, council, mayor, the citizens, our staff, so and our business partners out there. So our customer base is pretty vast. The goal of our department is to deliver to you an annual clean audit every single year. I can be proud to say that the city staff members have done that again for you. I think that's our seventh year in a row that we've, the city of Meridian has successfully delivered to you, to you, council and the citizens, the clean audit, which we're very, very proud of. And we have to be held to the highest level of transparency and accountability. The audit report kind of gives you that answer or that report card. And we do act as your internal auditors for the city. So we're both internal auditors and auditors of all financial statement transactions. So again, this is just a kind of general overview of what we do for you and the citizens. We go touch bases on why we do things by division. So why do we do, why do we have the utility billing team? Again, we're here to provide our customers all the assistance that they need to answer their questions. We just got approval, or not we, but Compass just approved some numbers last night or yesterday of our population number, so. Might be a little premature announcing this, but I'm going to do it. The number for city in Meridian is one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety. Yes, that's one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety. That equates to about forty-three thousand customers that our utility billing team manages and assists on a daily basis in conjunction with the enterprise teams, you know, water sewer teams over there, Dales representing those. And we also have the relationship with our trash services provider. So again, that's what, that's why we are here. We're here to service our forty-three thousand customers and work in tandem with the water and sewer teams along with the trash services provider. So that is why they are there. And procurement, why do we have procurement team? Keith and Sandra are here to, you know, provide the procurement needs for the five hundred and some odd employees that we have here at the city. You know, our goal is to make sure that we keep everybody out of trouble to make it easy. You know, our goal is to make sure we're following the laws. Keith is helping create the laws and update the laws. So that is why we're here, to make sure we are following procurement laws and making sure we're make, satisfying the acquisition rules without getting us in trouble and making sure we're as transparent and ethical as possible with all procurement needs. You know, why do we have an accounting division? Again, the clean audit is the ultimate reason. That's why we want to have the accounting division. We're here to provide information, financial guidance, professional customer service, training, any type of help that you might need. You know, we're always bound by governing bodies with ever-changing requirements, so we're constantly educating ourselves, educating our team members, educating our customers. Our goal is to deliver a clean audit, manage the city's finances in an ethical and transparent way, and make sure that we can represent you as our council and our citizens in a professional manner. Then the last division we have on the screen is our budget division. Again, primary goal here is to deliver a balanced budget to our citizens on an annual basis. We have to follow a sound approach when we develop the annual budgets. We need to work with you along with our fellow directors and staff members, excuse me, to make sure that we share and collect the information to our citizens and to make sure we share and collect the information for you, the council, to make sound and informed decisions on an annual basis. So those are the, that's the kind of general overview of what we do for the city. Again, another aspect of what we do for the city or what we would call professional services. This slide kind of highlights some of the professional projects that our staff has the ability to provide you and our citizens and our customers. We have the ability to deliver internal audit services, efficiency analysis, and, you know, provide all services and accountability and transparency to all of our customers. It is our responsibility to deliver all services and financial information in a ethical and transparent way. Apologies, excuse me. So with the professional services, along with our standard services, you know, we provide rate model development, business model analysis, some financial contract auditing, process improvements, Peak Academy, and then financial cost accounting. So those are some of the professional services that we provide our customers. This is our mission statement that supports the city's vision statement. Our goal is to always deliver a positive experience in all things that we do. Pretty simple and straightforward. That is our ultimate mission, and hopefully you see that in their interactions with us on a daily basis. Following our agenda, so the expectations from us. So with all the services defined, you know, the Finance Department's committed to providing the financial guidance, the training, the internal audits, and a high level of customer service to all of our customers. This commitment takes time. We're hoping that you see these changes occurring daily, yearly, monthly, but that is our ultimate goal of what we're trying to achieve here. We believe that as we exceed our customer expectations, that we'll deliver a successful audit to you, the council, to the mayor, and to all of our customers. We take great pride in the clean audit. The audit is kind of our report card. We get this every twelve months, which we look forward to every year. We learn from our mistakes, and we adapt to the changing compliance rules. Our goal is to always make sure that we're fiscally sound and fiscally responsible. Again, the audit is done on an annual basis. It allows us to identify any gaps, any issues, any problems. Provides us guidance to training opportunities. Allows us to continually improve on our internal controls, our procurement controls, our policy language. Again, in with the annual audits, as we approve all these, the auditor will provide you a audit report that summarizes our abilities, our interactions, and hopefully does display a clean audit, which this year does. But again, that is our expectations. That's what we believe you should expect from us. And again, hopefully you're seeing that on a daily basis. So to continue with the agenda, successes. So since we've last met, we've been working on a few projects. This slide kind of represents what we've been working on. Starting in the top left-hand corner, we have our customer services. We've continued our movement to paperless environment. We've continued to use peak training to look at all our processes and manage our efficiencies or improve our efficiencies for internal and external customers. We also conducted a overhaul on our website this year. We worked with the IT department, and we updated our internet site to be more mobile-friendly and to be based on the data that our consumers were using. So we use the traffic data that we track on our internet to figure out what our customers were using, and we made those particular items the most visible and accessible to our customers. So we redivide, we redeveloped our website to meet those needs. Again, if you visit, if you've gone on to the website, hopefully you'll see that's way more mobile-friendly on your phone. That was our ultimate driving factors, maybe make it so that you can access your information easily on your phone. Again, still works just fine on a regular PC, but hopefully you saw those improvements. The next topic we will discuss is performance. Kind of goes along with peak, uh, peak training or peak innovation training. We've worked on six processes during last fiscal year. The processes went on to save the city. Let's see how much, forty-nine thousand dollars a year. So our first year of really doing process improvement, we saw some improvements or we saw some savings. You know, as we're all learning this peak approach, and I think we'll be able to expand and make these larger victory or these victories a little bit larger in the future as we all, I guess, understand the concept and buy into the peak training opportunities. Another thing we worked on from a performance standpoint is how do we manage COVID? You know, we, we all adapted pretty quickly. We felt that we were able to transition from a in-office to a remote environment pretty seamlessly. We had started a paperless movement prior to this, so the COVID-nineteen management act just moved a few of our to-do list items up on top, and we were able to make those happen, and we felt that we were able to deliver a seamless interaction with our customers. We engaged them to see how we did, and we made changes on the fly, but that was one of the items we worked on over the past twelve months. Technology is the third section. You provided us some monies to acquire a procurement software solution, which is called Bonfire. Since we've created or started that software, we've processed forty-nine bids successfully. We've heard great things from our internal customers and our external customers. Bonfire has turned our procurement process from a bid standpoint completely paperless. We now require zero paper from our outside customers and inside customers. All information is at your fingertips, so no longer will you need to email somebody, get an Excel file or email and get a Word document. Everything is at everyone's fingertips. It is mobile-friendly, so if you're in the call on your iPad, you can get access to your RFP bids. You no longer have to go through a different paper process. So we're pretty happy about that item. With that innovation or that acquisition that you helped us acquire, we were able to analyze the process improvements, and we have determined that we'll be able to push off hiring any procurement staff for a few more years at least because we have determined that the software itself has improved so many processes that we won't need to have an additional body, just to have an additional body, even though we're going to be increasing workload demand over the next few years. So again, we appreciate the software. We think it's going to save us money in the long run because it allowed us to create process improvements, which I think will delay any staffing needs in that particular division. So we appreciate that. Open Gov Stories, this is a transparent communication to our external customers. We've upgraded or updated our transparency website using stories so that we can now be, I guess, help educate the, our customers a little bit more about what we do for a city from a financial perspective. So again, we hope that you have the opportunity to check that out. We're happy with the way that turned out. Audit reporting, you got you, we, we, we as a city delivered a clean audit, so we're pretty stoked on that. So that goes out to all the, all the staff members who made that happen. Open Gov Dashboards. We have some Open Gov training that was sent out. We'll be providing in the next few weeks. We have a city council dashboard that now provides all your, I guess, KPIs or indicators that you found that are important to you. So we have now gone completely digital from a, from a reporting standpoint for you, you, council. We used to provide you a seventy-page financial report. We now have provided you a dashboard that is accessible on the web, so we hopefully that is proving to be beneficial for you. So again, now you have data that's live every single night as opposed to waiting thirty days for an updated set of financials. So we think it's way more timely for you. It's trying to get you the data so you can make informed decisions since you meet weekly and providing you a financial report every thirty days wasn't, I think, the right data set for you. So now you have actually financial data that's updated nightly for you. So this is some of the successes that we've worked on over the last twelve months since we've last met, so now we'll touch on the road ahead. So again, the agenda here, again, I think you'll see a theme that our goal here is to provide our customers with better tools. Kind of like dashboard, provide you guys with better tools so that you can make informed decisions so that we can allow our customers to be more effective, more efficient, hopefully. Hopefully allows the staff members to free up time to work on other items and make the financial management easier. That's our goal with our road ahead. It is our responsibility to continue to look at the tools that we provide our customers to adapt to the ever-changing environment. See, a few of the items on this list might have some budgetary requests down the road, but our ultimate goal is to do all of these things in-house with the skill sets that we have within our own staff. So again, just looking at customer service, again, we're going to continue to look at using technology to reach our customers from a paperless standpoint. We're going to try to make the customer interaction more seamless. You know, we're all getting comfortable with, you know, how Amazon works and how everything is pretty quick and at your fingertips. I think our citizens are going to want that from us as a government, and we need to figure out how do we meet that new demand or that new lifestyle expectation, so we're constantly looking at that. Again, utility billing is going to look at process improvements regarding electronic payments. See how we can continue to allow our customers to get, make payments that's easily, that's easy for them so we don't create a burden for our customers to have to drive to City Hall. And twenty years ago is a lot easier to drive here, to get from Eagle and McMillan. It's a lot more difficult. So we want to make sure that we don't create a burden to our citizens from a payment standpoint. So we're kind, we'll continue to look at making easier for them to make payments. Peak, again, process improvements, technology. We're going to be implementing a new budget software solution for you guys next year. It's going to be a big shift. We will provide plenty of training, but you gave us funding last fiscal year. We're still on the implementation side of it, but budget software is coming down the road. We'll work with you guys and help you get ready for that. Open Gov Stories for non-financial data. So we would like to continue to use Open Gov to be our portal of data transmission or data transparency to whoever. We are starting to put some non-financial data on there, so we're going to introduce that to council. Council is the first dashboard that has that, has some fun, balanced information. But if you go onto your council dashboard on Open Gov, you'll see some new non-financial data that we're going to be testing out to see how that's working. Succession plan is a big one for us. We've successfully completed a three-year succession plan with the retirement of Rita. We've now have to start working on our next group of team members to have a positive succession plan. Prior PBB is a acronym for priority-based budgeting with our, with the city completing its very first ever priority budgeting process from start to finish. We now need to look at how do we manage to fund all these programs, activities, and services to our citizens? You know, we want to continue to look at a cultural shift instead of looking at a budget from a department standpoint. We want to look at the city's budget from a holistic standpoint as these are the services that we provide. Executive branch, how do you provide these services? And then let us manage that from a budgetary standpoint. It's a culture shift. But Lisa talks about the programs rather than the departments. The department still exists, but we're looking at maybe changing, you know, having a different way of looking at your budget. You know, instead of just departments, you look at what we provide our citizens. Time card, our time card is getting pushed to the limits. We need to replace it, so we'll work with HR and IT to identify some new software. We'll present a budget request at that time when we find a solution. And then legislative, always working at the state our procurement team is. Keith has been very involved with that, looking at improving our state law so that way we can be more productive and efficient with what we do. So again, those are the things that we're working on as the road ahead. If you see things that are missing, please let me know. We're always open to ideas, but these are some of the things that we have on our whiteboard for our projects to work on ahead. And with that, that gets us to the very last slide, which is questions if you have any. So again, I appreciate the time to present to you our annual update. And all the success goes to the seventeen team members that work on the finance team. They're the ones who make this successful. If it weren't for them, we wouldn't have the team that we have. And I'm very lucky to work for them, and I'm very happy to work for them, and I take a lot of pride in what we do. With that, I hope that you see that, you know, pride coming through in what we do every day. I can tell you that we're pretty, you know, we try to make a positive interaction with everything that we do. And with that, I stand or sit for any questions.
Thank you, Todd. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Strater.
I'm just a comment, Todd, just kudos to your team. I mean, you're a trusted resource, I think, for all of us, but I've been amazed. No matter how many questions we ask, no matter how many ways we ask you to slice the data, your team is just really on point, and they are just, I trust them to provide the answers. Good, bad, or ugly, I feel like they're really reliable, so thank you.
Appreciate those comments, Liz, and hopefully we can keep that relationship between us and all of our customers. We, you know, we, we do have a slogan, and I do, I guess, remind our team members that we want our customers to know that they can count on us, in whatever form it is. If it's a question, we want that to be the first thing our customers know and that they can count on us. So I appreciate that, Liz. We're continuing to work on that, and hopefully we can continue to improve.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Comment in a question. Echo Councilmember Strater's comments, particularly around you and your team's willingness and diligence to encourage more automation, a digital approach to local government. It's pushed me out of my comfort zone. For counsel's benefit, one of the things that, that Todd, when I had the pleasure of being the Finance Department's liaison, is he would say, if a citizen had to show up at City Hall, he took that as, as a failure. And I really resisted that, but I'm, I'm coming around, so I appreciate that. I think that you and your team, maybe with the exception of the folks in MUBS, they give me a little bit more of a hard time, but everyone else, top-notch. But my question is, were there any awards that, that you received this year? I, I seem to recall there was an award, but it didn't make it onto the slide. And I, I just want to at least give you an opportunity to, to weigh in if, if there was an award that we wanted to highlight.
I, 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 I might be miss, I, I might be misrepresenting the award, but I think it was the, the, the best department of the year award. Oh, is that what it was? Is that what you're referring to?
You know, I saw something on social media, so I can't recall. I just saw you moving in an animation, and, and it brought me a lot of pleasure and joy. Because, Todd, I, I do think you do a great job of, of leading the department. And you do a really great job, to Councilmember Strater's point, of you and your team supporting us, giving us good feedback, and all the information. Giving us good feedback and all the information that we need to render our decisions and, and I really appreciate it. Even the folks in MUBS.
Thanks for the good words, Luke. I'll let MUBS know there's a little, little love going their way too.
Counsel, any additional comments or questions? Okay. Thank you very much, Todd. Uh, appreciate all you do. And, uh, we'll, we'll get on to spending some of your money here in a few minutes, if that's okay, but we'll, we'll start, we'll, we'll, we'll move that down. So with that, counsel, we will move on to item number twelve, community development field subarea plan update. And ask Ms. McClure to walk us through this next item.
Ask, no mask. Good afternoon, mayor and council. Uh, this agenda item pertains to the work regarding the field subarea plan. Uh, in which council prioritized it at the two thousand nineteen comprehensive plan. Our consultants, Logan Simpson, will be reviewing work to date, including public engagement. And hopefully we can have a robust conversation on next steps. Bruce Megan, Megan Moore and Cameron Gloss are on the call to walk you through this. And I'll be here to answer questions or answer staff perspective. With that, and if there are no immediate questions, I'll turn this over to Logan Simpson.
Right, um, well, good afternoon, mayor and council members. It's great to be presenting to you on such an exciting, uh, subject. Um, and that is, uh, sort of taking the next steps of the comprehensive plan. So, um. I want to first, uh, sort of commend you on, you know, many, many people stop short after they do a comprehensive plan. We talk about their vision. Um, I think the field subarea plan is, is a great example of. Sort of translating your values into reality and what a great place to do it. I know there's some development out there, but. Uh, you've been blessed with, uh, four square miles of, of, uh, of land that you can directly influence. Uh, in partnership with the community, other agencies and the property owners to create a great place that really complements. Um, your community. Uh, moving forward, um, just a little bit on, on today's objectives. Uh, we want to make sure that we give you a project overview. We are in the stage of the project where. Um, we've, we've been doing public outreach and the pro- and the plan is starting to settle. Uh, when it starts to settle, we want to start talking about implementation. Cause that is one of the goals of this project is to move it beyond just, uh, the comprehensive plan, move it beyond just a sub area plan. But actually move it on to the built form, a place where when we look left and right, we're very proud of what we see. Uh, we also want to talk a little bit about this idea of place making. That this plan goes beyond the colors that you see on the comprehensive plan to the idea of amenities. And, and places that we can walk and feel and enjoy. Want to make sure that we give you an overview of those. And then we're going to, um, um, start talking about setting the stage for future implementation. That's the discussion that we want to have at the end of what, uh, what we'd like to do here. Um, not to come to the final answer, but maybe just sort of as we're sort of midway or a little bit passed through the project. Sort of set that stage for that discussion on, on how do we move the project forward, uh, towards that final fruition. So one of the things, uh, just to set the stage before we get into, uh, an overview of the, of the project. Um, is to talk a little bit about, uh, the goals of implementation. And that is to make sure that when we look at what we see on these maps. That we're really doing everything we can to ensure that it actually turns out that way. And that is making sure that we get the right type of housing, commercial, as well as amenities and place making. That actually happened. And that's, uh, that takes, um, some crafting. It's things that we've done before. Um, so it's not, it's not something that's, uh, unachievable. It's just making sure that we pull the right levers. To help assist the development community, uh, to help us do this. Um, the other, uh, thing that's important as we think about implementation and as we go through this presentation. Is this idea of being proactive and we always talk about coming in afterwards or not being head of the game. Or in, um, I think, I remember definitely during the comprehensive plan, the community wanting us to be ahead of growth. Uh, knowing that growth is going to come, but definitely being, um, head of it and planning for the right type of growth. And I think a plan like this, uh, can demonstrate that as well. We'll talk a little bit also, or I want you to think about this idea of a lot of the stuff that we'll be presenting, we need to do anyways. Uh, this idea of provision of parks and greenways, um, i- is, is very important, but by being proactive, we can concentrate them in the right place. And make sure they happen at the right time to ensure we get the right type of commercial and housing happening in this, uh, critical area. Lastly, um, by doing it early, um, w- we, um, can also, uh, make sure that. We can actually achieve this goal. Right now the land is being absorbed very quickly. So by being proactive, we can make sure that the land is still vacant. When we take some of these actions. That the cost to the city and our community and our developers is less. Um, and in addition, any funding mechanisms that we put in place, we can, um, uh, make sure that we capture. The incremental value of the land as it goes up over time. So by doing it earlier, we can really, uh, get funding sources that are more effective and, uh, and really help move this project along. So those are just things to think about. Uh, we'll, we'll jump into the softer presentation, uh, uh, right now. So we can move forward here. So just, uh, not to remind you about the vision, but the reason it's up here is. Uh, the field subarea plan is a direct translation, translation of the vision into physical form. So this idea of, of having a premier community. Um, and that is a community that has some of the greatest amenities and that's what Meridian is known for, is one of the top communities in the nation. This is an opportunity to redemonstrate those values, including those level of service, uh, levels. It's also about an evolving community and that's making sure that we're adapting, um, our different forms to the various trends. Um, that people are desire, but we're also being extremely proactive. Livable community, idea of creating, uh, places that are, uh, that are family friendly. To a vibrant community where we have a core center where people can engage, but a center that represents. Um, the latest in, in terms of, uh, uh, how centers are being developed. And lastly, a connected community, really thinking of not only transportation, about how to be more connected. But also thinking about trails, greenways and other connections within the field subarea. But also to our adjacent communities, really capitalizing on the treasure valley. Uh, just a reminder of the, of, of the sub area itself. Um, uh, you can't, can't ask for a planner, you can't ask for anything better. It's a complete square, but it's, uh, from, uh, uh, Eustick up to Chindon, northern border is Star. Um, but this area is exactly four square miles. The concept again is this concentration of a great center and amenities right in the heart of this, uh, new community. Uh, that, that we see here. We can move on again. Um, you know, we talked about implementation and, you know, it would be wrong to say that you haven't started it. Cause you've already set some of the key things going that makes this area highly desirable, uh, for, uh. Both what you see in the comprehensive plan, but also what you see in the sub area plan. Uh, the idea of, um, both, um, uh, uh, capital programs that, um. Um, sort of direct, uh, provide some direction for a new sewer lift station. Makes development in this area a lot more feasible. So it sort of opens the floodgate a little bit. But also sort of quali- quality of life amenities by already pre-setting and having a high school centered. Um, in a, in a great location to make this, uh, sub area happen to some of the key, uh. Buffers that are needed to make our community safe, to planning for some of the road expansions that are already pre-planned for this area. And then lastly, um, the idea of highway, uh, sixteen being a long-term amenity on, on our border. That's again, going to put additional pressure for this area. A, a little bit of a framework, you know, you'll see things that are hand-drawn, they're hand-drawn for a reason as we work with the public. We want to tell people that these areas, though they were directly reflective of what you've approved in the comprehensive plan. They do take the next level. They give us a sense of the building program, the types of housing. Um, as well as, um, the types of commercial amenities we might see. And in addition, it talks about the amenities, how it might feel to move around, what type of amenities in terms of parks, trails. Uh, we might, we might see. In addition, it starts to speak to connectivity. Uh, not to mention the word traffic, but that's always a concern. An idea that this could be an extremely livable area, but an even more connected area than, uh, even other places that you see. Within the city of Meridian. So, uh, this, this project began in, in fall of two thousand twenty. I'm, I commend you again for, for, like most communities, you, uh, you saw COVID and you kept, uh, moving forward. Development didn't start, uh, you're, you're, you're still, uh, even more desirable in terms of, uh, uh, of a place for people to live than you were before. So, um, the fact that you just kept on moving and business as usual for the most part. Um, um, was, uh, discreet on your part. Uh, so how we reacted to COVID was it allowed us for more personal interaction and targeted outreach with various stakeholders. Um, so that would included one-on-one conversations, but it included, um, heavy involvement from, uh, both, um. A lot of our agencies and that includes, you know, just the plot. One is talking to, uh, you know, both Ada County. Um, and, um, as well as, um, the folks that, um, address our large roads. People are very interested in what happens in this area as a model for other communities, um, that are adjacent. In terms of how to do development right. Uh, we also then moved forward with, uh, the creation of some initial concepts based on the, that feedback. And, uh, we had digital workshops, uh, sometimes imperfect in some ways because it is digital. But they were very, very, for some, they're very exciting because they provided direct access right from their home to doing land planning. And that's always a, a fun thing to do, um, from the comfort of your living room. And then, um, as we move forward, uh, we'll again, reach out to the public and, uh, after we hear from you. Um, about the final plan, but we won't, uh, start developing that final plan until we, uh, gain some additional feedback. Plan to wrap up, uh, by spring of twenty twenty-one.
So as part of that outreach, really three key areas have really come into focus for assets and amenities. The first one really being that area focused identified early on in the process, which is that center at Star and McMillan. The second being kind of this greenway space just south of that area that connects kind of the platted neighborhoods on the east side. With the third thing, which is kind of the regional city park on the west side of Star. Uh, so these three pieces together really form the opportunity, um, for city involvement and partnership as we get into implementation. So you'll see these three things come back when Bruce speaks again. Uh, in regards to these amenities, really looking at the center, there's a couple of things in regard to the center that makes it a little bit different. Than anything else that you currently have, uh, within the city. So really taking a look at the orientation of the buildings. Um, you know, with the anchor commercial kind of set right up against Star in the corner of McMillan. Kind of creating a streetscape of building, building frontage along McMillan. And then key here is the opportunity to both integrate the greenway system, uh, that I mentioned in the last slide. With kind of the central park system that comes up north and intersects kind of with this small-scale, community-focused main street. Uh, you also have the ability to, to blend that main street and blend some of those mixed uses. Into residential, which is the orange buildings south along the, the pathway system and then further to the east. Um, so you've got that vitality that we talked about early on in the vision. You've got that livable. You've got those family-friendly assets. Uh, the greenway and pathway itself, so there's already planned connections to your five-mile creek, uh, pathway system. Further east, um, and even past McDermott into the rest of the city. So what a huge opportunity here to be able to continue that south of this kind of commercial and mixed-use center. And then across Star into this park system that's to the west. Uh, but in addition to that, you also have the ability to really focus these neighborhoods. On both sides of this greenway, again, kind of creating that vibrant atmosphere, giving these neighborhoods an asset that's maybe not found in other areas of the city. And can be something special. Um, in addition to the pathway system itself, you've got the opportunity to include open space, picnic areas. Um, and in, in addition, kind of the connection up here to that center itself. Uh, through coordination with, uh, Nampa and Meridian Irrigation District, we've already talked about the ability to provide a pathway on the north side. Much like you have in the rest of the city. And then improvements on the south side would be outside of those easements. And then last, the city park area, this allows the city to be able to maintain, uh, um, and even fulfill level of service standards currently in place. Uh, this is an area of the city that's relatively underserved, mostly because development really isn't out there right now, but offers a key opportunity to get ahead. Of development prior to it coming in and be able to provide an amenity ahead of those neighborhoods, uh, being developed. Again, this is an opportunity, uh, in regards to the irrigation facilities out there. You've got the five-mile creek. System and that pathway system we just talked about, coming in across the middle of the park site here. As well as the Phyllis Canal system extends further north into Star and then northeast in the Eagle. And even south into surrounding, uh, community in Nampa. So you've really got the opportunity here at the, at kind of the key of a bunch of irrigation districts, providing access to a large regional trail network. Um, the other reason for the location of the park in this, um, in this location is really to serve as a buffer to this industrial area. The inner mountain guest facility here at the west. Um, and you've got really great access off Star and with a new collector road to provide access to the, the park, knowing it would be a. A high-traffic volume creator.
So, um, working up, uh, to our, to our discussion item here, um, is, um, we thought we would tease things up. Uh, with, uh, just some thoughts about implementation. So really the first step here. Not to decide on anything, but just to, uh, to, um, uh, open up a discussion for one of many paths to go forward. And we'll talk a little bit about, um, how we would, how you might see this area. Uh, um, unveiling if you were to follow just a limited level of, uh, of, uh, sort of, um, implementation actions. To something a little bit more targeted, to, uh, to maybe something that's, um, um, even a little bit more, um. Uh, uh, proactive to help see the vision through. So I'll run you through each one of these. Again, uh, just, just because it's on a PowerPoint doesn't mean we're recommending it. It's really for, uh, just opening up the conversation. But we talked a little bit about, um, uh, you, you know, that idea of this center. This center is located not on the interchange. We have commercial, uh, standard commercial or, or traditional com- commercial located towards. Um, highway sixteen, but the idea of having a, a truly walkable, great, uh, center for all the community to go to. Another destination, um, within Meridian, um, is, is what we're talking about. So the idea is, is, is maybe just very limited in- incentives to ha- to help encourage this center to happen. Um, you know, I think the residential will happen on its own, probably ready to go, uh, um, you know, as we talk. But the actual commercial center, uh, providing a little bit of help, but then also making sure that we do, um, assist with, uh, design. Uh, and character standards for, um, what's near there, the greenway and the pathway that, and park. That Megan talked about, uh, making sure that it develops into, um, one, that regional park is something special. It does catalyze area, brings the community together, but also that, that five-mile creek greenway. Is something that serves both the residential areas, uh, to the south, but also, I mean, it's something of a, of an urban amenity. Uh, uh, greenway that serves the center. So providing those standards of what that greenway looks and feels like. Uh, would be a, at least, um, a good first step. We go on to sort of what could be next, you know, sort of, we would do those. We go on to sort of what could be next, you know, sort of, we would do those things, same, same actions. But we'd go a little, a little bit uh, further. And that is um, looking at um, you know, working on that Five Mile Creek and actually being, using that to meet some of our level of stuffs, of service standards. Uh, but also uh, you know, something that the city has done before is, is construction or supportive trails. Um, it's actively uh, building and constructing or, and, and acquiring the right-of-way for that trail itself. Um, that showing the development community that um, we, we are serious about this being a great center uh, for Meridian. And then um, sort of moving on from there is the next level is, again, something that we need to do anyways to meet our level of services, concentrating is doing those first two things, but also concentrating um, our efforts in terms of our parks uh, right towards the, the center of this area in that regional park and doing it early. Um, and that includes designing construction of a new regional park, something to catalyze the, the heart of this uh, of this area of Meridian, um, and meet our, our standards. It also um, creates um, um, I wouldn't say bargaining chip, but it creates an offset as developers come in. This could be something that they need to contribute to or, or, or at least uh, something that could be waived in some ways it, some ways uh, to meet their uh, parks and rec standards that they have to provide anyways. So um, there is some bargaining chips there. Lastly is uh, is uh, not to forget all the other um, implementation me- methods that are out there. I clearly partnerships, we talked a little bit about um, open space and fee waivers, especially in light of that larger park. There is the ability to offer uh, some professional density bonuses uh, for um, for, for that center. Code updates, um, there could be some adjustments directly related to this area. But I want to focus a little bit on um, this, the concept of uh, an improvement district. That is something that um, could be in place, put in place earlier and, and uh, something that's used in Idaho. Um, and by putting it in earlier, you're, you're essentially capturing the, the incremental value as that land goes up. And if you think about uh, that as well, um, you know, you're investing in um, a lift station. Um, also um, our partners are investing in a large amount of road improvements going um, through this area, all those arterials. And then eventually a new highway. Um, and that's something that's going to really force land values up in the future. And then um, as well as people develop this nice center, that will also go up as well. Capturing that incremental value allows us to put those dollars back into this area um, to help pay, help pay for implementation. So on that note, uh, uh, it's a, it's a tough subject for, for later than day, but uh, we thought we'd have this discussion with you earlier rather than later. Turn it, um, so I'll turn it over, back over to Brian.
Mayor and Council, we'd like to discuss some of the ideas, get your initial thoughts and concerns, and then if needed, follow up with an initial uh, workshop discussion uh, before we submit for a, a final draft document uh, for public hearing. We want you to be comfortable with this. We don't want you to be blindsided by anything. And so we just are looking for, send that feedback. Now we're at additional meeting. To stress, uh, we're not asking for you to make a decision today. And even when we submit the final document, there will be some flexibility. Keep in mind that this is still a high-level plan and details have to be considered with opportunities and as things shake out. With that, here are a few discussion suggestions. Uh, what are some of your initial reactions to doing things a little differently out here? Is the city willing to explore and expand tools to ensure this area of the community doesn't have to get on a freeway or near an interchange to access neighborhood goods and services? And without any uh, dedicated funds or land for improvements, uh, is there any latitude to explore the funding sources to ensure that the area has a park and, and to main- maintain or improve service goals? With, with that, I would love to have a discussion with you all.
Thank you, Brian. Council, any questions for uh, staff or the consultants?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Kavner.
Maybe to get, help get some things going, either a question for Brian or for Bruce. Would you mind kind of just giving us a summary about what some of the feedback came from the stakeholder group? I know it, it formed a lot of the recommendation that you shared with us, but we didn't spend a whole lot of time kind of giving us what that feedback was from, from that group.
I'm actually, yes, I'm actually gonna defer to, to Megan on that one, since she sat on all of them. I sat on some of them. Uh, Megan, do you want to jump in and, and talk a little bit about uh, make sure we're completely transparent about the good things and then any controversy that was out there? I'm sure the mayor would appreciate that.
Sure, of course. Um, so early on in the process, you know, we really kind of focused on the center and its surroundings with some of the stakeholders and asked folks, you know, some of the key big ideas that they saw in this area. A lot of folks talked about other case studies. Um, I know bound crossing was mentioned quite often as something to look at for this area. And so hopefully you see some of those similarities with kind of that central street through that um, town center. But also was the opportunity here to really be able to integrate the neighborhoods with the center itself a little bit better than maybe has, I shouldn't say better than has been done in the rest of the city, but a little bit differently, maybe. Uh, to be able to expand that central street within the center, expand that into some of the medium, the high-density residential to the east, and then utilize that linear green space. You know, really to create a focal point for both the center itself and the neighborhoods, be able to create uh, connections across it uh, and really form kind of this, this really central core to that four-mile square area because it is a little bit separated from the rest of the city. So a lot of the focus early on was also talking about some of the character, uh, some of the historic and even architectural character that we really didn't get into tonight, uh, but anticipate having some imagery to, to focus on that within the plan itself. A lot of folks have mentioned kind of the history of the, the agricultural area, so building on that as part of the architectural character to create, um, you know, some kind of focal point within that center, like a, I, like a barn building or barn roof line uh, is probably a better way to put it out here. And then building on that aspect as some of those elements along the greenways, the open space, et cetera, the benches, et cetera. Um, in regards to funding options early on, we did talk to some, you know, developers, uh, folks in the financing industry for development, et cetera, realtors. And CID, even um, LID's local improvement districts were also brought up, but CIDs were brought up quite often. Um, as well as just kind of the partnerships between city and development as it comes in, be able to work together, both understanding kind of the vision for the area as well. I could go on and on and on, but but is, I should stop and ask, is there anything else specific that you wanted to, wanted me to talk about within the public outreach process?
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Councilman Kavner.
Thanks, sir. No, Megan, I think that's helpful. You know, some of the, the feedback that I had heard from stakeholders, participants um, really touched on two things. One, the desire to celebrate Meridian's agricultural heritage, which you touched on, and some thoughts about the CID. So I, I appreciate that you kind of summarized that. I, I appreciate that. I don't have any further questions at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I would just maybe add in, and this will come as no surprise, but repeatedly, and I think from everyone I talked to, pathways and connectivity was important, just like the rest of the city.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
On paper, I, I've, I've always liked the uh, idea of having this type of um, community, sub-community uh, at the Fields District. I, I, it's just been, I think it's a great idea, and I think that um, it was a focal point during the comprehensive plan discussions. I believe we owe it to our citizens to stick to it. I think one important part of this, to, to make this successful is for sure getting um, la- you know, those who own property out there, landowners, future developers, let them understand that this is what we're planning on. Um, and I, and I believe that we're doing that. I think that those that own property or who have purchased property or who are looking at purchasing property in this area, um, I just don't want any surprises personally. I just want them to have buy-in and make this as a, a really cool area in our community where people can, can congregate, can, can experience community in a way that really isn't part of, we haven't done before in our, in, in the city of Meridian. One last thing, I like the uh, the dairy aspect of it, you know? I like the, the, the farm aspect of it. And, you know, our friends to the east um, just opened a park recently um, that I love. And they did a fantastic job with it. Don't necessarily think that we need to be copycats per se, but uh, maybe uh, sit down and talk with them and, and look what they've done and incorporate that because that has Meridian written all over it, if you ask me, in my opinion.
We can do it better for sure.
Luke said it, not me. And so I uh, I, I think that's a, that could be a really cool thing. I know we're not talking about design here. That's not the focus of what our discussion is, but that could be a really cool idea for that park somehow, some way.
Councilman Perrow.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Uh, I do have some questions about the plan, just higher-level questions. Um, first, I, I wanted to just make a comment that I actually would love to see um, a little bit more of the um, neighborhood services on some of the corners there. Just um, you know, that, that is an area where it's, it's likely going to remain a little more rural. I don't know what the plan is on the north side of Chindon. I assume that is just in the county right now. Um, and we're not sure exactly how Star will develop southward. And so just would like to actually see the, a little bit more, you know, if this is going to be its own concept, I want to see a little independence to it of the surrounding area to, and so I would, I would um, recommend just a little bit more on that uh, neighborhood services focus. And then also curious about the, the uh, medium-density residential um, all the way up to Chindon and Onshun. And so I know that's part of our comp plan, but that being such a major thoroughfare, it seems to me like you would have a more intense use along that section between Star Road and Canada. Um, and then, yeah, and if, if, if you have any information for us about, I mean, we didn't see on the renderings what uses are um, are already expected on the east, or excuse me, on the west and on the north. So I, I'm curious what that looks like big picture and how much that was taken into account as the, the, the decisions were made. So I was the um, Community Development Liaison last year, and we worked on this just a little bit. COVID kind of affected the process for us, and it does look a little different than I last saw it. But if you could share some thoughts on how this is going to integrate with the plans for Kenny County and Ada County, that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Councilwoman Perrow, um, most of the land uses were, uh, we did quite a bit more analysis on this area during the comprehensive plan process. And I apologize, I don't have anywhere to look at, so eyes are meandering for you. Um, uh, part of that included looking at balance of land uses, a- and that included our neighbors. What you don't see in our map is a considerable amount of uh, your traditional, for lack of a better word, stripped-out, what would be stripped-out commercial retail services a- along those major corridors. And we're not competing with that. Uh, the idea with this originally at least um, was to uh, provide a, a, a number, the number of rooftops needed in this area to support the, the commercial center at the core, which, which again is not to compete with those other uh, land uses in the adjacent cities. So like Star, uh, Napa to the west, Napa to the south, and then largely excluding everything to the east of State Highway sixteen. Um, but that's why you see those land uses there. They, they represent a balance, the number of rooftops needed, jobs needed. Um, not, not, and not just here, but citywide. Certainly if your direction or request is to look at that again, we can. Um, but that analysis had been done previously, and we were really focusing on how do we implement that vision as part of this work here today.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. I know the intention, of course, is not to, to do, to compete. What I just want to make sure is that we have the appropriate balance for this area, and we're not looking at it as an island and independent of what's happening with the neighboring areas, and they probably won't develop as quickly potentially as this area might. So we may not know, um, but we can make our, our best, um, you know, guess as to what might happen. Uh, but would you also mind answering um, the question about having the MDR up, up along the, a- along Chindon?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Perrow, yeah, so the, again, that was there uh, in, in terms of just number of rooftops and balancing those rooftops. We're, we're certainly uh, cognizant of the land uses in adjacent areas, uh, a- and what they have proposed, this is a little different. We are trying to do something uh, that, that works here and sustains the area without, for example, more than necessary burdening the transportation network with trips that they can't handle. Uh, we don't have a, a major employment center near here currently, uh, and we don't want to put a lot of trips further away from those. So the rooftops you do see here are intended to support the area without more burden than necessary. So if we kicked up the, the rooftops, for example, in the MDR to medium-high-density residential or added high-density residential, um, we'd be taking away from the core and we'd be adding more trips than we had intended to do. So certainly we can take your, take direction to look at that again. Um, but this was all gone through with a pretty, pretty good fine-tooth comb as part of the, the citywide analysis with the comp plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogland.
Mr. Mayor, Brian, just wanted to find out uh, where, where you are, and, and maybe it hasn't even started, but on a staff-to-staff interaction with uh, Nampa and Star, with folks about what their plans, future plans are for that area. I mean, this could be an island out there if they put in industrial or, or some other uses that, you know, might seem a little uh, incompatible. But, I mean, we want this to be a special place, but have, has that started in just a discussion level to kind of find out what, what they're thinking?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogland, uh, yes, we've talked with them, we talked with them as part of the comprehensive plan. Uh, had a little bit better dialogue, I'd say, at that point. Uh, we had Compass and some others more regularly at some of those meetings. Um, this plan, we have talked with them several times. They've lost some of the institutional knowledge from that process, which has been a little difficult for us. Um, but they have and are planning for this area to be developed on all sides. So Nampa has some mixed use and, and commercial uses on the west and south. Uh, Logan Simpson's actually working with the city of Star on some planning activities north of Chindon and, and their area of city impact. Um, this area is going to develop entirely, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, follow-up.
Councilman Hogland.
And, and I, I just think just in terms of a comment, uh, if, if Highway sixteen gets built in a reasonable amount of time, and that's, that's a big if, in my opinion. But I, I really do think that's going to become a, a great divide. Uh, and so to make this, that, that thumb that sticks out there a special area and a community within a community, I think is, is a great idea. And if we do it well, it, it'll be a, a wonderful area. So I, I just think that road will serve just like the freeway does north and south of Meridian. Um, it, it makes some difficulties in, in transitioning from one to the other area. And if we can make that a kind of a self-contained uh, four-square-mile area, I, I think that would be a, be a good thing. But being compatible with the other areas, having the other communities involved i- is going to be a part of the equation as well.
Councilman Strider, if I can just follow up on that, then I'd be happy to recognize you. It's, and that, that's my real comments. I, I actually made these comments when I s- uh, sat on this comp plan steering committee. When we talk about making this area special, we, we, and we talk about thoughts of bound crossing. And then we have major arterial roadways that bisect this area. I, I hope that we are taking a, a vastly different approach in working with ACHD about what we'd like to see in the roads in this area. A, I, I'm, you know, right now, uh, McMillan does not go any further than Canada. I don't know if, how it's designed to be implemented on the other side of that, but it really allows you to stop that road even to a certain extent from being a collector right there at Star Road or moving Star Road, you know, realigning it further towards the industrial park to go around. So where we do create some of those areas around the community center. I, Eric, I'm, I'm just always concerned when you start putting um, a gathering place at the crossroads of arterial roadways, that it does not adequately protect. And that, yes, we could go down to leave them at two or three lanes. It's not impossible, but at least looking at the transportation network because it does have its own specific advancements with both Highway sixteen and Chindon in that area. But how it doesn't connect on the other side, I think we can afford to look. But how it doesn't connect on the other side, I think we can afford to look at roads differently in this area, depending upon that. So, just encourage you to make sure that that's part of the conversation as we look at this. Councilman Strater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I would just say I'm supportive of the concept. I remain supportive. I think it's really important for us to plan this area proactively, and I'm a fan of trying to master plan anything that we can. I think that's a good approach. My questions and comments, really, it's three things. I'd love for us to, I know we've done the comprehensive plan, I'd love for us to challenge ourselves and ask the question, if there was an employment center here, what would it be and what would it look like? Could it be like agritech businesses? Could it be something else that could, is there a place along Chindon that that could go? We're trying to minimize trips across the city, so maybe we've done that already and the answer is no, but I'd love for us to try to look at that. Concerned also about Highway 16, and is there a way to make sure that the five mile pathway connection and our other connections are possible to continue despite the future Highway 16 plans? Hope we're getting our arms around that. And then, just a question in general, some of the comments, I guess, from the consulting work made me think that the mini Main Street comment might not be self-sustaining, and I just wanted to tease that out a little bit. Do we think there's enough demographics here that it supports the mini Main Street? Are you saying, just being really direct, that the city somehow has to subsidize that to make it happen? I just wanted to understand some of those comments.
Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy to jump in there, Brian, if you'd like me to.
Go for it, Bruce.
Yeah, no, we just want to, you know, in today's environment, especially as a point of sale and the move towards digital, you know, digital buying, we're all doing it. And there's packages arriving in our house, you know, weekly and so on. People are seeking out, though, still, the ability to have a sense of place, places that have retail combined with entertainment. To do that, though, the retail world has changed. And so, what you're seeing here, and you're also seeing it in other communities, is the downscaling of retail. So, they get, places are getting smaller, but it's more focused on vibrancy. The other part of that equation is making sure you have enough rooftops. And in this case, this plan is balanced to the commercial that you see here with that high density especially being in there. That does not even include through traffic, that on these busy roads of people stopping. But the idea is, let's create a self-sustaining community so it's vibrant all the time, 24/7, plus others can come and visit it and spend their dollars and leave. And then the last thing I'll mention, and that gets to the point of, will this just happen? Well, inertia, you know, not to speak bad about developers, but developers will tell you this as well. It's easier to build a certain product type at intersection of two large roads and not build it exactly here. And so, this is creating something that, you know, again, people pointed out, at the heart of the community, not at the heart of the future intersection. And that does make it special and different than what you see in other places. In order to ensure that it happens and we don't follow inertia, which is status quo development, the idea is to help preposition some of the stuff that you might have already done, but do it earlier while land prices are cheaper, and preposition them in a location that helps the development community know that we're very serious about being predictable in this area, but also that it helps them make the right choices, that there is a Central Park right here, there is an investment in this great greenway that connects other communities, there's the Phyllis Canal Greenway connecting up to the Stars, Stars Development, that development right here makes sense. So, maybe stuff that you might have done at a later date, concentrate efforts now. And that is just one implementation idea, but it's sort of an earlier win and a less costly win over the long run.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater, since she were poignant, I'll just likewise, we definitely don't want to subsidize development. The conversation trying to characterize here is focusing city improvements that we would be doing ideally, that we do all over the place, but focusing in this area where we want them and making sure that we're supporting the things we want and not wasting those opportunities by waiting too long. The other element there would be exploring other opportunities for funding, land value tax, bonding techniques, different partnerships with Carrots and Sticks, whatever that may be, that we don't already do to improve what we would normally do because this area is special and because it is isolated. So, there's sort of two elements there, but I am glad you brought that up because it is important. Are we interested in exploring other techniques for funding and partnerships that we don't necessarily do elsewhere in the city to make this happen right? But being clear that this is not subsidizing development.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
That's a great question. And I don't know if you're going to, that's a complicated question that I for sure don't have, understand all of the funding mechanisms that you talk about. So, I would be certainly open to learn more about that and to see what that looks like. But having that further discussion tonight probably may be a hair early, in my opinion.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, what would be, understanding that this plan, we don't want this plan to just be a shelf document, and we want the implementation to have value and to get us to where we want to go, and understanding this is sort of a high level plan still, we don't know what the partnership opportunities are there, what could we provide to you that would help you to feel better about whether we should go that direction or not?
For me, I don't know exactly, I mean, I've heard of, what was the CID's? I've heard of those and LID's. I don't know the complexity of how those work, to be completely honest with you. I know the general way, but I would like to know in depth, you know. I think we all know how bonding works and all that type of stuff works, but I just don't know personally.
Council, that was going to be my recommendation to this group, that, you know, as they're not looking for a full yes or no, but to come back and have a workshop presentation on CID and LID's, at least from just understand that concept, what it could mean prior to further direction on and next steps for this area's consideration. I want to make sure all council, at least had, Councilman Board, I don't know if you had any comments you'd like to make. Otherwise, I'll get to what that timeframe looks like so we can figure out what this feels like. Councilman Board, any comments or questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, that dovetails into that next conversation. If you're asking for what tools in the toolbox, we may be open to considering the CID is certainly one. The question would have been, among the list of elements in this plan, which, if not all, are eligible for participation in that type of funding? And again, that can be answered in the next, the session that the mayor is describing, perhaps, on the CID 101. You know, it's a participatory process with the landowners, so some of the open space pathways seem more disconnected than the lift station type infrastructure investments. So, we probably don't need to delve into it now, but that would be something certainly would help us provide more clear direction if we're comfortable exploring some of those tools, knowing what components can be assisted with it and what can't.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
And maybe how the park fits in with all of that because, you know, that's certainly a paramount part of what this whole thing looks like. I mean, to be honest with you, and is that something that we need to look at now before it gets too expensive or do we wait? I have no idea, but that's something we need to talk about as well.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Burt, to be the sacrificial planner, absolutely, we need to look at, have a park out there. We don't have one. You know, you look at Ten Mile, we don't have a school, we don't have a park. It's the highest densities we have in the city going on right now. They have some open space, but there's nowhere to play soccer, there's nowhere to play baseball, there's nowhere to do any of that sort of stuff. It's not disconnected, though. They have easier access to theirs of the city, they have other services. This area doesn't have that. I think a park is crucial. I think Parks is interested in having a park out here, but they don't have any funding. They have other priorities and other needs. We've prioritized other services out here, but not that. And if we can find a way to option, hold on to, purchase, come up with a deal, get a donation, whatever that may be, but identifying where that goes is pretty important to me.
So, here would be my recommendation to council is that we try to bring back a CID/LID 101 to council in the next up to two weeks. We'll have to look at what makes sense, and then we can follow that conversation a week or two later with any additional feedback on this before it would move forward. Does that work from a timing timeframe, Brian? So, about a month-ish, or are you looking to try to move something forward quicker? Is there a time element at this point that we're concerned about?
Mr. Mayor, time's not been favorable for us with this project so far, and that's partly on us, but I think two weeks to a month is fine if I heard you correct. We do have, Lee Lynn did some work with Logan Simpson as part of this project, and they have a mini white paper of sorts that outlines a number of tools, and we can certainly discuss some of the preferred methods and find out whether you're interested in that or not.
Councilman Cavanagh, I look like you were wanting to say something.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just, I guess, maybe a couple of other pieces along that is, to the best of staff's ability to bring us kind of what anticipated costs are, I mean, back of napkin math, you know? It's hard to say general fund versus CID when, I don't know if we're talking about a dollar or 100 million bucks, I'm sure it's somewhere in between. So, give us, give us a sense about what we're thinking cost-wise. And then potentially, I think, for that conversation at the, at the month point, is if you could bring us, Brian, just some, with the land uses of the municipalities that kind of touch us in this area, so we can get a better insight on that particular piece. And then the other piece, Mr. Mayor, I think a suggestion is maybe a conversation for council and the Parks Department about park priorities. I know we've got, you know, Aldapee Park that's kind of out in this area that's planned. With what we're talking about, is that still the priority of the council? Does something here in this neck of the woods that's kind of master planned, does that move up on the priority? I think, I think it's important for the Parks Department to hear from council on that as well. So, again, maybe a, here's what's planned, here's what's forecasted, so that council can at least understand what the roadmap is from the Parks Department's perspective.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
I just think, I think I'd love to see what a fully loaded number three enhanced participation looks like, and then it's easier to take things out of it. If you, if you show us, like, really going for it, then we could tell you, like, whoa, you've gotten too far, your back of the envelope on that is too far. That's just my two cents. But I think number three, I feel like there's a lot of openness, I'm hearing to number three, I'm open to number three, but I think, like, show us what that looks like, what the timetable, milestones and tools are. We can read the white papers, right? But what does that look like? If you can look at the employment center thing, if that's just not viable, that's okay, but that, really, from my perspective, if we had some employment center, even if it was limited, that would help me feel a little bit better about, about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bruce, Megan, Brian, we will see this coming back for further conversation.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, and a great conversation, a great, great area. Congrats on having this part of the city, so.
Thank you. Councilman Burt.
I move that we strike number 13 from tonight's workshop agenda. We actually have that listed at our six o'clock meeting, and so we'll get to it, just not at this, during this meeting.
Do I have a second to that motion?
I got a motion.
I have a motion, a second, to remove item 13 from the agenda, is there a discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the item is removed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
I got a motion.
I have a motion, a second, to adjourn the meeting, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the meeting is adjourned. Council, we're going to start a little late. 6:05, 6:10, which, we'll shoot for 6:10 start time to give everyone an opportunity to get things in order before then. 6:05, 6:10, which, we'll shoot for 6:10 start time to give everyone an opportunity to get things in order before then. We will begin tonight's regular City Council meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoagland.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here.
Next item is Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is our community invocation, which this evening will be given by Christopher Ellis. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation, or take this as a moment of silence. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day, this beautiful spring day that you've brought us in Meridian, Idaho. And Lord, we ask that you would just come and just bless our city. Lord, I pray that you would just pour out your wisdom on all of us. And Lord, I pray that you would just give us guidance during this time. And Lord, I ask for the wisdom of Solomon to be on us as we debate and talk about what to do with the resources that you've provided for us. And Lord, I pray that you would just be in the midst of our conversation, be in the midst of our planning, and Lord, I pray that you would guide and direct us. Lord, we just lift you up, and we honor you, and we thank you today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis.
Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burton.
I don't see any changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I got a motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. And for the record, Councilman Cavanagh joined us 6:12? I wasn't, yeah, perfect. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then we will move into our department commission reports. The first item is the mayor's office. Fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million for Linda Road Overpass. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Provided you memo as well as budget amendment and some project information for this budget amendment for Linda Road Overpass. So hopefully, I will be brief, and hopefully, the information in the packet may have answered some of your questions, or maybe spurred some questions. And then we'll turn it over to you all for really conversation and consideration. As you know, Meridians citizens are prioritizing a more connected community, and the city is focusing on partnerships with our transportation infrastructure projects, including the fact that Linda Road has been prioritized as our top priority under the ACHD Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. As you recall, back in November, we sat down and sent a joint letter with Ada County and ACHD encouraging ITD to advance this project, and we recently received a preliminary scoping summary from ACHD that actually gave us some dollar figures around the project to the tune of 21 to 22 and a half million dollars, roughly. With that, the request is pretty straightforward, allocation of requesting allocation of 2.5 million dollars of city funds to Linda Road Overpass, which is about 11% of the project costs, with the intent that this will help advance the project in the local and state transportation infrastructure projects, the tip in the step through Compass and ITD. And I'll stop there, maybe take any questions and have any conversation. Turn it over to Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. And just to add in from that standpoint, we've been having this conversation for several years since I've been involved as a staff member and as mayor, and it really is about, everyone always asks, what is the city's investment in this, in this priority project? This is the dollars that have been in the RCFP. 2.5 million dollars for this project. It would be part of the FY '22 budget year, but honestly, we would like to convey the city's commitment to this project sooner rather than later. With all the conversations occurring regarding the state legislature and potential bonding authority, you know, potential stimulus or transportation package coming out of the federal government, it's in our best interest as a community to get this project into the state's tip and step, and putting money to the table can help make that happen, so that if funds become available, they can move quickly as this project. If nothing else, it gets on the, on the docket for consideration. Any dollars that will be expended will be done through contracts that we will have at some additional timeframe with either ITD or ACHD. So no funds will be expended, but it does put our commitment out there for our partners and the community regarding this road project. So with that, happy to take any additional questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
One, credit where the credit's due. Appreciate you bringing forth this budget amendment. This has been a hot topic of conversation for a number of years, and appreciate you and Dave bringing it forth. My question is, what would be the process for when funds would be expended? Is that something that I can anticipate that you would come to us for an action item, but what's the process that we know, okay, we've committed, and then here's the dollars that are going to actually be spent?
I can speak from my standpoint. Until we have the item listed in a step or tip and the dollars are identified, because we don't know if this would be money that would be for ACHD or ITD, whether it be for, when we did Locust Grove, it was for right-of-way purchase, so it was done in advance. If they asked us to do preliminary design and construction documents, you know, again, I would envision that being a contract with them for that purpose. So until we have something in writing, some sort of agreement, you would not see any dollars being sent to any other agency for any other purpose.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burton.
And I know that you would, and Mr. Miles in the mayor's office would already do this, but just keep council abreast on funds spent and what that, what that looks like. I know that that would never be an issue, and I know that you would do that anyways, but just on the public record, that would be just for the, our citizens' perspective, and so they know, understand the process. I just wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely. Council, any further questions, comments? Items for discussion on this item? Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million for the design and construction of Linda Road Overpass. Mr. Mayor, a second.
I have a motion, a second, is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted. And for the record, Councilman Cavanagh joined us 6:12? I wasn't, yeah, perfect. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay, then we will move into our department commission reports. The first item is the mayor's office. Fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million for Linda Road Overpass. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, provided you memo as well as budget amendment and some project information for this budget amendment for Linda Road Overpass. So hopefully, I will be brief, and hopefully, the information in the packet may have answered some of your questions, or maybe spurred some questions. And then we'll turn it over to you all for really conversation and consideration. As you know, Meridians citizens are prioritizing a more connected community, and the city is focusing on partnerships with our transportation infrastructure projects, including the fact that Linda Road has been prioritized as our top priority under the ACHD Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. As you recall, back in November, we sat down and sent a joint letter with Ada County and ACHD encouraging ITD to advance this project, and we recently received a preliminary scoping summary from ACHD that actually gave us some dollar figures around the project to the tune of 21 to 22 and a half million dollars, roughly. With that, the request is pretty straightforward, allocation of requesting allocation of 2.5 million dollars of city funds to Linda Road Overpass, which is about 11% of the project costs, with the intent that this will help advance the project in the local and state transportation infrastructure projects, the tip in the step through Compass and ITD. And I'll stop there, maybe take any questions and have any conversation. Turn it over to Mayor and council.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. And just to add in from that standpoint, we've been having this conversation for several years since I've been involved as a staff member and as mayor, and it really is about, everyone always asks, what is the city's investment in this, in this priority project? This is the dollars that have been in the RCFP. 2.5 million dollars for this project. It would be part of the FY '22 budget year, but honestly, we would like to convey the city's commitment to this project sooner rather than later. With all the conversations occurring regarding the state legislature and potential bonding authority, you know, potential stimulus or transportation package coming out of the federal government, it's in our best interest as a community to get this project into the state's tip and step, and putting money to the table can help make that happen, so that if funds become available, they can move quickly as this project. If nothing else, it gets on the, on the docket for consideration. Any dollars that will be expended will be done through contracts that we will have at some additional timeframe with either ITD or ACHD. So no funds will be expended, but it does put our commitment out there for our partners and the community regarding this road project. So with that, happy to take any additional questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
One, credit where the credit's due. Appreciate you bringing forth this budget amendment. This has been a hot topic of conversation for a number of years, and appreciate you and Dave bringing it forth. My question is, what would be the process for when funds would be expended? Is that something that I can't anticipate that you would come to us for an action item, but what's the process that we know, okay, we've committed, and then here's the dollars that are going to actually be spent?
I can speak from my standpoint. Until we have the item listed in a step or tip and the dollars are identified, because we don't know if this would be money that would be for ACHD or ITD, whether it be for, when we did Locust Grove, it was for right-of-way purchase, so it was done in advance. If they asked us to do preliminary design and construction documents, you know, again, I would envision that being a contract with them for that purpose. So until we have something in writing, some sort of agreement, you would not see any dollars being sent to any other agency for any other purpose.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Burton.
And I know that you would, and Mr. Miles in the mayor's office would already do this, but just keep council abreast on funds spent and where that, what that look, what that looks like. I know that that would never be an issue, and I know that you would do that anyways, but just on the public record, that would be just for the, our citizens' perspective, and so they know, understand the process. I just wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely. Council, any further questions, comments? Items for discussion on this item? Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million dollars for the design and construction of Linda Road Overpass.
Mr. Mayor, a second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk will call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. I want to say thank you to council. I think this will be the right step forward to continue getting us where we need to go as a community. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Have a good evening.
Next item is the Parks and Recreation Department Discovery Park Phase Two amenities update, and I will turn this over to Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Chris, I have a blank screen.
If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Next item is our community invocation, which this evening will be given by Christopher Ellis. If you'd all please join us in the community invocation or take this as a moment of silence. Ms. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day, this beautiful spring day that you've brought us in Meridian, Idaho, and Lord, we ask that you would just come and just bless our city. Lord, I pray that you would just pour out your wisdom on all of us, and Lord, I pray that you would just give us guidance during this time, and Lord, I ask for the wisdom of Solomon to be on us as we debate and talk about what to do with the resources that you've provided for us. And Lord, I pray that you would just be in the midst of our conversation, be in the midst of our planning, and Lord, I pray that you would guide and direct us. Lord, we just lift you up, and we honor you, and we thank you today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ellis. Next item is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
I don't see any changes to the agenda, so I move that we adopt the agenda as published.
I get the motion, Mr. Mayor.
I have a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is adopted, and for the record, Councilman Cavanagh joined us 6:12. I wasn't, yeah, perfect. Mr. Clerk, do we have anyone signed up under future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then we will move into our department commission reports. The first item is a mayor's office fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million for Linda Road Overpass. I'll turn this over to Mr. Miles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Provided you memo as well as budget amendment and some project information for this budget amendment for Linda Road Overpass. So hopefully, I will be brief, and hopefully, the information in the packet may have answered some of your questions or maybe spurred some questions, and then we'll turn it over to you all for really conversation and consideration. As you know, Meridians citizens are prioritizing a more connected community, and the city is focusing on partnerships with our transportation infrastructure projects, including the fact that Linda Road has been prioritized as our top priority under the ACHD Integrated Five-Year Work Plan. As you recall, back in November, we sat down and sent a joint letter with Ada County and ACHD encouraging ITD to advance this project, and we recently received a preliminary scoping summary from ACHD that actually gave us some dollar figures around the project to the tune of 21 to 22 and a half million dollars roughly. With that, the request is pretty straightforward, allocation of requesting allocation of two and a half million dollars of city funds to Linda Road Overpass, which is about 11% of the project costs, with the intent that this will help advance the project in the local and state transportation infrastructure projects, the tip in the step through Compass and ITD. And I'll stop there, maybe take any questions and have any conversation, turn it over to Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Mr. Miles, and just to add in from that standpoint, we've been having this conversation for several years since I've been involved as a staff member and as mayor, and it really is about, everyone always asks, what is the city's investment in this priority project? This is the dollars that have been in the RCFP, $2.5 million for this project. It would be part of the FY '22 budget year, but honestly, we would like to convey the city's commitment to this project sooner rather than later. With all the conversations occurring regarding the state legislature and potential bonding authority, you know, potential stimulus or transportation package coming out of the federal government, it's in our best interest as a community to get this project into the state's tip and step, and putting money to the table can help make that happen so that if funds become available, they can move quickly as this project, and if nothing else, it gets on the docket for consideration. Any dollars that will be expended will be done through contracts that we will have at some additional timeframe with either ITD or ACHD, so no funds will be expended, but it does put our commitment out there for our partners and the community regarding this road project. So with that, happy to take any additional questions or comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
One, credit where the credit's due. Appreciate you bringing forth this budget amendment. This has been a hot topic of conversation for a number of years, and appreciate you and Dave bringing it forth. My question is, what would be the process for when funds would be expended? Is that something that I can't anticipate that you would come to us for an action item, but what's the process that we know, okay, we've committed, and then here's the dollars that are going to actually be spent?
I can speak from my standpoint. Until we have the item listed in a step or tip and the dollars are identified, because we don't know if this would be money that would be for ACHD or ITD, whether it be for, when we did Locust Grove, it was for right-of-way purchase, so it was done in advance. If they asked us to do preliminary design and construction documents, you know, again, I would envision that being a contract with them for that purpose. So until we have something in writing, some sort of agreement, you would not see any dollars being sent to any other agency for any other purpose.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burnt.
And I know that you would, and Mr. Miles in the mayor's office would already do this, but just keep council abreast on funds spent and what that looks like. I know that that would never be an issue, and I know that you would do that anyways, but just on the public record, that would be just for the, our citizens' perspective, and so they know, understand the process. I just wanted to bring that up.
Absolutely. Council, any further questions, comments, items for discussion on this item? Or a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we approve the fiscal year 2021 budget amendment in the amount of 2.5 million dollars for the design construction of Linda Road Overpass.
Mr. Mayor, second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, clerk could call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton. Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Strater.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. I want to say thank you to council. I think this will be the right step forward to continue getting us where we need to go as a community. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Have a good evening.
Next item is Parks and Recreation Department, Discovery Park Phase II amenities update, and I will turn this over to Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. Chris, I have a blank screen.
Mr. Mayor. That's what I was going to say. If you're comfortable taking that up, it'd be helpful. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you. I am here this evening or this afternoon to discuss some updates that we made to the design that was presented to council on March 16th. As you remember, we'll just kind of back up and go over some of those, some of the designs that we initially started with for Phase Two of Discovery Park. We had an active area, a teen area, and then some multi-use fields, which are multi-use diamonds that could be converted to either diamonds or rectangles. And then each one of the breakdown of each one of those areas was pickleball courts and basketball courts. We had a pump track designed in here. One of the things that we did hear from council is that, in addition to the pump track, that there was a desire for an upgraded bike park amenity, as well as maybe an enhanced pump track. The, this was the area that was presented with the diamonds and the multi-use fields, and then also a teen area that included a raised seating area, some half-court basketball, and a, what we were calling a skate spot, so a place to skate and scooter, but not a full skate park. Council, we talked about that, and it was the desire of council to come back with a more robust skate element to this park, which is what we've done. So from that, you can see some of the design changes that we made. We've taken the active area, and I've got an enlargement of each one of these, so you can see, but really, keep in mind that these are, these are conceptual at this point, but it's a good idea just to gauge the level of amenities that's desired and generally the overall layout. So we've got the active area still there. We've, we've taken, we've kept the basketball courts. We've added a couple of tennis courts, which was discussed with council, and then, of course, we have the six pickleball courts in the community garden. The multi-use fields didn't change at all. The teen area, we've added the skate park to that, and then also added a bike park down in the lower right-hand corner. So this is an enlargement of the active area. You can see the pickleball court. We've added tennis that would have dual striping, so it could be used for either pickleball or tennis, so we'd have a total of eight pickleball courts, two full-court basketball courts, and then connecting walkways, and the shape and general configuration of the community garden changed a little bit based around this, but that amenity is still in this design. So the diamonds and the multi-use area didn't change from the March 13th design. We feel that there is a large community need for this, and one of the things that's always been talked about with this site is that this was the, this is a softball complex site, and really, this will be the last softball fields that we see being built in Meridian in the foreseeable future. So we think this is a really good opportunity to get these fields in at this time, have them lit, congregate them all on one site, where a lot of our fields right now, if we have tournaments in the city, they're broken up between multiple sites, and there's never that, that, that real strong tournament feel that you get by having all these, all these co-located on the same site. And like we talked about at the last meeting, these are truly multi-use, so there would be rolling fences. The lighting could be interchanged between diamonds and rectangles, base, so you could switch between football, lacrosse, softball. In addition to that, it could be used by Little League baseball. You know, there's no outfield fences for that length, but we hear so many times that some of these organizations, all they want is field space, and that they will just make a field work. If you have a diamond for me, we will make that work. There's just a real need. So in addition to that, like I said, we, there was quite a bit of discussion around a skate park, and this is a, this is a representative sample of what could fit in this teen area. This is a, the skate park that's kind of dropped into this design is the skate park that is in Star. That is the one. It's 14,000 square feet. You can see the general layout and the number of amenities with that park, so it fits really nicely. What we're finding with skate parks, and then once we get to the bike park, is that's a, it's a very specialized field where landscape architects and engineers don't design skate parks. Skate park designers and builders do the design work, as well as some of the bike parks. So we can, we can kind of get into that. Some of the delivery methods that we would like to use is a design-build contracting for at least the two portions between the skate park and the bike park, and these would be unique, so we'd have to write some contracts. They are allowed by statute to, you know, we're allowed to use that design-build process, so that would be a good delivery method to get the best product.
Mike, are the Stars optional? I mean, I think that's the city of Star. We don't need that, do we?
Yeah, so that's, yeah, great question, Mr. Mayor. Like I said, that is, that was taken from the plans that we got from Star, so yeah.
I was just going to mention, one of the things I heard from a cousin of mine in Arizona, that Tony Hawk has a foundation that specifically works on bike and skate parks that we may want to reach out to.
So this is the bike park area. So what we, we envision for this area is a connecting walkway, possibly a picnic shelter for spectator area. In touring some of the local facilities, we've learned that the pump tracks really function better when there's two of them, because you can separate skill levels that way, and then even some of the straight-line tracks, if you can get different skill levels that can be identified with, as people relate to ski areas where you have black, blue, and greens for different, different levels. So there's a lot of, quite a bit of design work that fits into this area or that would go into this. The area that we have conceptually dropped this into is 3.75 acres, and it can flex a little bit, so we can get up to four-ish, four and a half. The Albertson's Family Bike Park in Boise is a total of seven acres. It has two pump tracks and a very robust dirt track for bikes, but that also includes parking. It also includes some buffer area, so we think that on, just in terms of scale, that this would be comparable to that. So a lot of amenities, a lot of different uses. Again, we like to see parks that we build fit a variety of demographics. You know, we like the multi-generational aspect of some of these, where you can come to the park with your family and you can, there's something for everyone. You can play pickleball, go to the playground, bring your bike, and so we think this is really, kind of checks all those boxes. So as far as next steps, we would like to finalize design development, go into construction documents, submit for a CCC application, and then the delivery method of issuing an RFP to evaluate and select two different design-build firms. One would work on the skate park, and one would work on the bike park. That, that delivery method for both those amenities is consistent with other cities that have done skate parks and bike parks in the area. The city of Boise, their bike park was, was done through an RFP, but the RFP was issued by the Albertson's Foundation. It wasn't the city. And the same holds true for Road Skate Park, but there is, you know, that, that is a viable option for us. And then, of course, finalize permitting. It's our hope to budget for construction in FY '22, which would mean we'd want to bid it later this, later this fall, early winter contract, and break ground early in the spring of '22. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Barton. And of course, that assumes included in the FY '22 budget process for all of this.
Correct.
Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Thank you, Mike, for that great presentation. I, in general, I really liked the changes. I really think it's a great idea to expand the pump track into its own area, and it didn't feel like it fit in the other uses in the last design, so I think that four quadrant feel really balances that out, and I think there's, you really heard what we were saying, and I appreciate that very much. The one question I have is, however, just looking at this, it looks like that this might increase the cost quite a bit, so can you, do you have any estimates for us of where this, is this still fitting into the budget, or do we have some significant adjustments to consider?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, those are, that's a great question. I appreciate the positive comments. We're not prepared to discuss budget this evening. We, we would really, you know, like to settle on a design and then start working through some of the takeoffs and then come back to council at a later time and discuss numbers. I know that construction costs are accelerating right now, and we do have a lot of work to do to, to fit this into what our existing impact fee account might be at the moment, and that's our goal. So really, I think tonight's, the goal of tonight is to say, yeah, that's it. I mean, this is really a good design. This is what the community desires. It's, there's something for everybody here, and if we can build it all at once, we'd love to. If we need to maybe create a Phase Three or a Phase Four, I think that is one possibility. What we have done in the past when we bid is we, we structure the bid so we get the base project, and then we do bid alternate, and depending on where things come in, if they're favorable, then we can approve some of those alternates. So, yeah, not, not an easy answer, but I guess the, the short answer is we'll be back.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
To tie into that question, Mike, the design-build is, it's unique, at least for us. You mentioned an RFP. As part of the RFP process, I'm going to require the submitter to give a cost estimate based upon the concepts that you're including in the RFP, which I know still has to be created, but will they at least be able to provide you that framework as one of their required submittals?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton, that's a great question. The answer is yes. They will provide qualifications and a price.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
I mean, a price in the sense that there's not, it's not been designed yet, so they are somewhat estimating, I assume. They're not bidding on it, but at least enough of a ballpark to give you some criteria as part of your selection.
Yeah, correct, correct. And for instance, the skate park can be both design and representative samples of what could be built, and for, at least for that one, you can talk in terms of square, square foot price. So if you want 14,000 square feet, it's this price. If you want 10,000 square feet, it's less.
Okay. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Yeah, but Mike, I appreciate that. I don't want to, wouldn't want to draft components of an RFP here, but because it seems somewhat different, the process that you create and finance creates and legal to get through this, so long as that is, you know, and the RFP is drafted with some careful particularity to address those elements, that's really critical on this front end as part of the selection process, so.
Mr. Mayor and Councilman Borton, it seems like what, so we can't hire a skate park builder, designer to design it, where we can hire them to design it, but if they design it, they can't bid on it. So the best one, we want the best ones, the best companies that have produced the best results to design it. We also want them to build it, which is a little bit problematic, because we can hire Grindline, for instance, did Middleton and Star and Road Skate Park, and Grindline is an expert designer. They're also an expert builder, so, but if we had Grindline design the park, they couldn't participate in the construction. So that, from that standpoint, it kind of ties our hands.
Mr. Watts, you look like you want to say something.
Yes, I, I'm Mr. Mayor, Councilman Borton. So we are still in the process of designing the process and the documents that go along with it. The RFP will have to have a measurable award criteria, and we will need the work cost into that. And as Mike said, the statutes do not allow us to hire a designer to design a project and then build on the construction, bid on the construction as well. That is against statute. I have, the state that with the legal department just confirmed that they saw the statute the same way I did. So under Mike's scenario, the design-build process would be the only other alternative to accomplish having a designer and do the design with any construction. But like I said, we're still in the early processes of designing the processes and the documents, so my process will be to amend our purchasing policy to allow for design-build, then create a process and document simultaneously. I've got several sample contracts, and I'd like to share those with legal heads, got a couple as well, and we're going to review those and come up with the best agreement for the city and incorporate those into our RFP. So it will be somewhat of a detailed process before we get to the solicitation.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Council, any further questions or comments for Mr. Barton?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Couple of quick questions. First off, Mike, thanks for bringing this back. This is awesome. Appreciate taking the feedback from council and making some changes. This is great. My questions were about the community garden, and I recognize that this is conceptual in nature. Do you anticipate with these changes that the community garden would get larger, smaller, or remain the same size?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Cavanagh, they're roughly the same size as the initial design.
Great. Mr. Mayor, just one additional, if I may.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Mike, in one of the images, I noticed there's like an outdoor workout area. I can't recall if we've touched on that and if I've just missed it, but I notice it's in close proximity to the playground, and just trying to understand kind of the, the purpose that that would serve in conjunction with the playground.
Yeah, great, great question. Councilman Cavanagh, that's, we have recently located outdoor fitness equipment near playgrounds, and it seems, it seems as if people that bring young kids to the playground, instead of just being stationary on a bench, that they like to work out maybe on a, on a strider or recumbent bike or something like that, as their kids are running around, they might as well get on something and get a little exercise at the same time.
Fair enough. Look forward to checking it out. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Thanks, Mike. I love that there's something for everybody, and it feels really balanced, and especially compared to the last version. And I like that we're maximizing a city asset and really getting full use out of this regional park. Maybe that saves us from building smaller parks, and to your point, maybe this is the destination and.
And to your point, maybe this is the destination and and we figure out how to pay for it along the way and take our time if we need to. But I I think it's really headed in a good direction and I appreciate the the redesign.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Burton.
Yeah, I I couldn't agree more with what my council members have said in regard to listening to feedback. I can't tell you how many of my sons, kiddos, or friends have mentioned to me how badly they wanted a skate park in this part of town. And it's, uh, it's just going to give kiddos something to do. You know, get them to the park, not a better place, if you ask me. And so I have a lot of friends also that that have been down to St. George and other places who have experienced their bike parks. And so this is just something unique. And I'm, and not to take away from the baseball diamonds and the softball fields because they certainly serve a purpose, but it's really nice to see something other than baseball fields and in softball fields.
Counsel and Pro.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. And one more question, Mike. So the, could you bring up the slide that shows the active area, please? I'm I'm curious about the balance of the tennis pickleball courts to the basketball courts. And is that based on like actual number, numbers from the Parks and Rec Department of usage for the pickleball and tennis? Do we have tho- that kind of data? Because I I kind of feel like maybe we could go a little lighter on the pickleball, maybe add another basketball court. I mean, it seems to me like just as, you know, part, like basketball's played by maybe a lot more of the population than pickleball. Maybe I'm way off, but I'm curious if there is actually any like number, numbers or data that we have from the Parks Department that would support one or the other in terms of usage at home court and kind of how we track it.
Yeah, and that's, it's a, it's a great question. I know pickleball is.
Hugely popular.
They are, it's huge. I mean, it is blowing up. In in the wintertime, home court is is packed every single.
Hugely competitive. It's old man sport. That's where, it's where we can, as us old guys who have the beard, beard, compete. That's how we compete.
Looking in a time machine.
Pickleball and golf course, that's the only places where we can compete now. You got to give us something.
It's.
Mr. Mayor.
You know, the 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 pickleball is, I I I like the dual use aspect of the two extra courts because we want the courts busy all the time. So that that provides an amenity to both tennis players and pickleball players. But yeah, that's a great question. It it is, go to, go to home court sometime. It is just.
Competitive.
Easy, busy.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilman Pro, you were looking to say something else.
Yes, thank you. Just one more thing. I just, you know, I, the only reason I'm asking is because I, I I don't know if it's a fad or if it's here to stay, but basketball's been around a long, long time. And it's not a personal preference of mine. I just, I I want to know that, like, whatever we build, whatever, you know, is really going to get some use. And I do, I really appreciate the dual use of the tennis and pickleball court, that extra that was added, for sure. Because I feel like having tennis out here would be really important. But I just, I don't know, I kind of would be interested in seeing, like, just something that supports that so that we know we're really on the right track with, you know, yes, we know in general that it's really popular, but you know what I mean? We're going to spend quite a bit of funds. I I'd like to, if if we have numbers, if we don't, I wouldn't suggest like an extra effort to do that. But I should throw that out there.
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman, I I think we can, we we have those numbers. I'm not prepared to, I didn't bring them with me, but I know we can get them for you. And as our liaison to the department, we can certainly provide those numbers for you.
And just to piggyback off of that, I think one of the things that while we don't necessarily want to ask West State to provide this for us, West State does have tennis courts and basketball courts. So at least they're middle schools on their element. So there are several other areas where you can go enjoy those, but there are no pickleball courts. And they're not striped for that purpose either. So that amenity does exist in other parts of our community during non-school hours and during the summer where there's at least access to it. Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I just, Councilman Pro, I I think shared some of your concern early on. But to Councilman Burton's point, this is a game that is traditionally played by a lot of our more seasoned residents, which I had a chance to review the, you know, Brian McClellan has that Meridian demographics trends. And it's that fifty-five to sixty-four and sixty-five to eighty-four that we're seeing some of the largest amount of growth increases in. So to me, I look at it as kind of providing an amenity for a population that's continuing to move into our community. So I I appreciate your perspective because I, because I got there initially. But I I think because we're seeing such a strong increase in people who would like to play this game move into our community, it's important that we have it in all different corners of Meridian.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holgland.
I think, Mike, overall, great design and great effort on on making the changes. I, it looks great. Now we just have to see what the cost is going to be. As to the pickleball, I just have anecdotal evidence. When we walk in the evening and go through Rita Husky Park, they have three pickleball courts and one hoop. And the other, some kids usually playing shooting baskets. But the pickleball courts are always usually full as this weather has warmed up. The neat thing, though, is demographically, there are families playing. I mean, you know, the kids are playing with their parents. And I mean, that's great to see. And I've even seen teens out there playing pickleball and having a good time. Now, I'm to the point where, yeah, softball in the day was the best thing in the world. Then it was basketball. Now I'm glad to see you got bocce ball. Yeah, that's a, where I'm, I'm headed now. So anyway, I think it's it's a great design and we'll just, we'll just see where we end up. So thanks.
And Mike, if I could just say kudos as well on the feedback and 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 that. And we'll see what we can accommodate or not in FY twenty-two and beyond.
All right. Thank you for your time. Thanks, thanks for the good feedback. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel, next up, continuing with our Parks and Recreation Department theme this evening, movie night and teen movie night pilot program. I'm going to turn this over to Director Sedaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Speaking of giving kiddo something to do, we're pleased to come before council tonight and talk to you about some ideas related to movie night and to seek your feedback. Movie night is one of our favorite events. And we've been running it now for around fifteen years. We we pride ourselves on on innovation and trying to adapt to to current needs and and direction. And we're constantly trying new ideas with just about everything we do. And as you, many of you will recall, as we went through the last strategic plan, and I was up here about every six months giving strategic plan updates, one of those strategic plan items was to go through our current programming and to look for gaps. And one of the primary gaps that was identified during that process in the strategic plan was to, was that the teens are one of, one of those main underserved populations in our city. The teen area in Discovery Park that you just saw is one response to that. And what we're wanting to talk about tonight with a possible switch from our regular movie night to kind of a split between half regular movie nights and half teen oriented movie nights is is another idea. Last month, we presented this idea to our Parks and Rec Commission. And they endorsed the idea to, and suggested that it move forward as a pilot program for twenty-twenty-one so we can see if it is, would, is something that would be popular with this age group. And before I invite Renee up to give you more details about the proposed program, I I just want to mention myself on the record, a huge thank you. Well, first of all, to Renee for all she does. But second of all, I want to say a huge thank you to Sparklight, formerly Cable One, who's been our title sponsor for this program since its inception. Really grateful for them. And there are, and the thank you to all of the sponsors. There's other sponsors as well, single night sponsors that allow this program to be offered to our community at no net cost to the citizens of Meridian, which we've been really proud of. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Renee to tell you about the the proposed program and seek your feedback.
Thanks, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it is so good to be in front of you talking about old fashioned events. As Steve said, we spent two thousand twenty talking about how to engage the community in innovative ways. And we did a lot of that that wasn't face to face. And so now we're getting back to some face to face types of events. So I'm really happy to be here. So while we spent some time thinking about events and what the objectives of our events were and what the goals were, we did a little bit of analysis of movie night. So, yeah, we are here to talk about a new idea, a pilot program. What we'd like to do is take movie night and split it in half. It was really born from, from the two thousand sixteen or two thousand eighteen gap analysis that we did. We really realized that teens are highly underserved in our community. When movie night started in two thousand and seven, if you can imagine, it was before the village was built. It was before Wahoo's and Roaring Springs was built. I'm told that Steve was an interim director at that time, so it was even before Steve's time. And it was certainly before Kleiner Park. And with Kleiner Park, we've seen an abundance of events that are produced by the community. So I really believe that movie night at that time met a need. We were innovative. In the, in the meantime, our surrounding cities have copied our model. You see movie nights in Kuna, Napa, and Boise. So, you know, what we'd really like to do is take the city resources that we have, try to meet a gap that we have found and and attempt to move forward with something. So we know that teens flock to movie night. We know that they come out in droves and they come out to be social. They're, they're not there to watch, you know, Frozen Two or any of the other movies that we're presenting for families. They're there because they get to interact. And we spend an awful lot of our our time asking them to sit down and be quiet. The majority of them are not bad kids. They just, they have nowhere else to go in our community that's free, where they can interact and be social and and really do their thing. So what would movie night look like if we split it in two, if we offered something for the teens? So the idea is that teen night would be hosted within Meridian Home Court. With that, we have the ability to do something that our local police have asked multiple times, which is find a way to put a perimeter around them, around the teens so that we can, if they are asked to leave, if they get highly disruptive and are doing illegal behavior, that we can ask them to leave and that they actually have to go. So the idea is that we offer a variety of games for them. So it's really not just a movie. We're gonna, we'd like to do pickleball, basketball, spikeball, board games, perhaps do a, some sort of a media challenge with making some TikTok videos, take advantage of the fact that we can project it up onto our movie night screen. The idea is that we really find ways to engage teens. We know that they are tough, tough group to program for. So we're, you know, we're, I'm not trying to make them sit down and and participate in anything that's structured, but allow them just to come and and really be kids. And, you know, hopefully, as a pilot program, we can change as we see things happening, maybe new trends. The commission's feedback, the Parks and Rec Commission feedback was prizes and food. So we'll see about what we can do to incorporate those things. So a couple of the things that in creating this, what are our challenges? Well, we don't know whether the teens will actually come. You know, we we don't, it, Home Court is a facility that is tucked away in a bit of an industrial place. We'd like to change the hours of the traditional movie, so it's a little bit earlier. We know that they, that, there's something special about coming out to the park at night when you can hang out that you're not allowed to do in the other place. So is this going to be attractive to kids? Well, we're going to work our, you know, really hard to try and and do that. Will it be attractive to sponsors? I have had some current struggles with getting sponsors for our movie night because of the disruptions that teens have caused. It has not gone unnoticed that that teens are beginning to overwhelm the numbers and from families. We certainly still have a a good contingency of families that come and watch it. But sponsors are starting to notice the the influx of of more teens. And if, one of the other challenges are unknowns is if we take movie night and we offer it every other Friday night rather than every Friday night, are we hurting ourselves as far as attendance for movie night? You know, I don't know. One of the indicators of success, though, so what, you know, when we evaluate this, what are we looking for to know whether it's working? And I think the biggest is that the youth will be attending, that the attendees are well mannered and that the event stays financially sustaining. That's a big one. And we had really, you know, we, as we evaluated whether or not we could offer teen night in addition to movie night, you know, we were looking at the financial cost of that, the fact that we're having some troubles with sponsors. And not only that, but our resources of staffing and not only staffing from our Parks and Rec group, but also from the police department. And in my conversations with them, they said it would be a real challenge to staff both events if we were offering both of them at the same time. That being said, of course, money can change both of those things. So we don't really need to talk about the security measures because really, I'm very interested in just getting feedback from all of you as to what your thoughts are on this program and whether, whether you think this is a good idea and and we should proceed.
Thank you, Renee. Counsel, questions, comments, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you so much, Renee, and I love the idea of teen programming. I wish we weren't in the, still in the coronavirus discussions. I know outdoor events seem much safer than indoor events. Do we, can we implement COVID protocols for an indoor teen event? And is this really the right timing with COVID for this summer, I guess, is my main concern?
Yeah, no, that's an excellent question. And so we've done an awful lot of analysis about COVID procedures for events in particular. One of the tactics that we can use is we can use a registration process, which allows us to limit the number of teens that are inside. We would certainly work with CDHC for how many people. I know right now it's less than fifty. So we could, you know, like I said, with a registration process, we can limit that to whatever the current guidelines are for for that. You know, we're, I'm beginning to feel pretty optimistic with the fact that that our numbers are dropping, vaccines are available. You know, I I feel like events can begin to cautiously come back. So those are our, you know, whether or not we could ask for masks and social distancing inside home court, I think that would be a real challenge.
Impossible.
I was using Sergeant Harper's language. It's a real challenge. So thank you for the question. I don't know if I've answered it satisfactorily.
Councilman Burton.
Kiddos aren't going to register. The the kiddos aren't going to register. They're just going to show up.
No, but we could get their parents, too.
They're not going to do that either. They're just going to show up.
It's a free event. Yeah. Well, we could still, because it. I'm sorry, that was me echoing. Because it is a hard perimeter, we can let in exactly the number of people and then turn the rest away. I, you know, obviously, never want to do that. But if people knew in advance that that was the the case. And, you know, we, we're currently working on registration for our unplug and be outside because we weren't sure whether we were going to be able to do ten or few. because we weren't sure whether we were going to be able to do 10 or fewer. And we are getting people registering in all of our classes and camps for the activity guides. People do register, so it's not, it's not unheard of that people have to register for things, and especially in this day and age. Yeah, that's why we're calling it a pilot program.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Let's go to Councilman Cavanagh.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Renee, appreciate you bringing this to us. You know, this kind of feels like an operational question, not necessarily something that comes before the council, but I appreciate you at least soliciting our feedback on that. I know you've got a long track record of process improvements, both in and out of City Hall, so I like at least being asked the question. And I guess a couple of thoughts that I wanted to share. One, I think everything you're presenting for the teen movie night sounds really, really great. I'm excited about all of it. But I'm 40, and as my fortio tells me, all my ideas are quote-unquote "cringe." So that worries me that something that I think is great might not be as well-received by our teens. And so I don't know if you've kind of vetted this with like the youth council, or if we're having teenagers and we want our own event. So that's the first piece. The other piece that I think is really important is that movie night needs to be predictable. And so this kind of every-other-week approach, I think, makes it challenging for families to kind of have that predictability. That's one of the things that's made movie night a success, where other cities kind of do it, you know, quarterly or kind of, you know, here and there. We've always kind of owned those Friday nights in the Valley, and I think that's a tribute to a lot of our success. So that's a piece that I just, I want to share. And then the other part is just, I appreciate that we're calling this a pilot. It doesn't feel a whole lot like a pilot to me. It feels like we're peeling this Band-Aid right off, and we're going to do half the events for teens and half the events for families that teens will still likely attend. And so I struggle that this is really a true pilot, and if we did want to pilot it, I guess my suggestion would be, let's do it once or twice, or, yeah, do it two or three times, maybe do it in August when it's later in the summer and movie night starts later. And let's demonstrate that this is something that really could be supported by our teenagers in Meridian. Like, movie night has been really supported by families and teens as well. So again, I appreciate being asked the question. Those are some of the thoughts that I've kind of come up with as I've kind of thought about this particular question.
Councilmember Hoagland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't know Renee wanted to respond in any way.
Yeah, no, I wanted to thank Councilman Cavanagh for his comments. Certainly, a pilot program could be done on a non-Friday night. Yeah, I agree.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Renee, I like the idea. And again, to Councilman Cavanagh's point, yeah, if I like the idea, then, oh, well, the teens like it. But one of the things you guys do a very good job at is marketing, letting people know of when things are happening, and folks will show up for those things. And so I think if you alternate nights, I think you can make it work. It's just a matter of the marketing that's done. And one of the things, too, I thought of to that end is, you know, to start off a successful program, you might have to offer incentives. You know, for teens, that's free stuff. That's pretty much for anybody, free stuff. But maybe to get them to go to Home Court and letting them know, and maybe the registration process, it enters you into a drawing. So those types of things that create that, hey, yeah, I'll register, here's my, here's my phone, you know, all those things that create that incentive. I do think this would be a pilot if you do it in my perspective during this summer, and then we've got enough data to go yes or no for next year, you know? So I don't mind that it's for the summer and you divide it up. Again, it depends on how well you market, but you guys have shown you do a good job at that, so I think there's potential here.
Thank you.
Any other counsel have comments before I make any comments? Councilmember Pearl.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My director, Sidaway, chatted with me about this this last week. We just had a very brief conversation, but one of the questions he asked was whether I thought it would take away from our current movie night program. And, I mean, I don't know about you all, but I attended movie night when my son was younger, and we usually would pick two or three during the summer, and that was about all that we would be able to get to with all the other activities that are going on. So I don't know how many families actually attend movie night every single week. I would guess that probably not a lot. So I didn't feel like that alternating the Friday nights would be harmful to the current, you know, movie night program that we've had going on for so long. But I really appreciate Councilman Cavanagh's statements because I did let Steve know I thought that I would want to test it out for one season and see. But I like the idea, too, of, I don't know, maybe potentially having fewer, although on the other hand, it would be a lot easier for us to get data on a pilot program if we had more nights on which to track that information. So that was all.
Councilmember Borton.
Mr. Mayor, Renee, you've got a track record of being exceptional. I trust you in your judgment. I'm all in. If it works great, and if it doesn't, you let us know. We'll make it happen.
Thank you, sir.
Go make it happen, Captain.
Counsel, I'll share my two cents on this conversation. I would much rather put on two, put on separate additional things that may have a cost as a pilot as compared to rolling back the current service that we provide through movie night. Now, Councilman Cavanagh, I talked about this earlier today. I mean, would it be, could you stop doing movie night at weeks six or seven and then just roll them and finish these off? But I don't want, as we come out of COVID, the community to feel like we've cut this in half. So the last time we had a movie night, we've had 10,000 to 12,000 new people move to Meridian on the conservative side from that standpoint. So I think that people are going to be looking for the opportunity to get out and have experiences this summer. And I personally don't want to sacrifice what movie night has meant to this community, even though I'm willing to expand and ask council to put in the resources necessary to pilot these teen movie nights, for whatever that stands like. I assume since it is an enclosed area, that Mav security would probably be sufficient in order to patrol an enclosed inside area and manage as compared to Meridian Police Department, so hopefully that resource would not need to be doubled up. But there is only one Renee, and I get that from that standpoint. So what I would ask is that I work with the director to come back with any potential funding costs and let council consider that next week about if we were to not reduce our movie night, or sparklight movie night program, and add in two or three pilots for a teen movie night during the summer, and identify what that might look like.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Schrader.
May I ask a question, Renee? When you're thinking about programming for teens, knowing, you know, unfortunately, we're still in COVID as much as we wish it was over. You just told me that you can't ensure masks and social distancing. What about a teen zone adjacent to movie night so that it's outside? Sounds like the teens are still going to go to movie night if there's only 50 of them allowed at Home Court. I know the police probably don't love it, but is there a way to have a teen zone that's near movie night but not as disruptive? Was that considered?
Thank you. I appreciate the question. So movie night being 15 years old, having people come that aren't watching the movie and they're disruptive isn't a new occurrence. My understanding is the previous event coordinator tried to put them all into one of the tennis courts at one point, and there was a fight, as there typically is, and they were, the police were unable to get into the thick of the kids to break up the fight. And so it was really our police department that requested that we not do that ever again. And I will also say that, you know, I have requested that police be present at pretty much every event that these young people come. There was one summer where they were available all but one, and of course, there was a fight and it was the first one, and at 7 o'clock before the movie started, there was a fight. I don't, I don't think these are bad kids, but I also, you know, feel the need to keep both themselves and the community safe. And with some of the other recent incidents, I don't feel comfortable doing anything without some police presence. Mav security takes care of the please sit downs, thank you, you know, for coming, but, you know, and kicking them out. And then what they do is they escalate any sort of actual issues to the police, who then either issue a trespassing ticket or call parents and ask them to leave. So Mav security is really more, and we're no longer using Mav, but that security system is really more of a crowd control, and any bigger issues then get accelerated to the police, who that is their, that is their job to handle.
Mr. Mayor.
Deputy Chief.
So I'm going to, I know Councilmember Burt likes hats, so I'm going to put my emergency manager hat on. And I know COVID's been mentioned, so the numbers are still pretty high at this point, 500 to 650 cases per week in the Valley. We're still at 17.26 per 100,000, which is high. When this whole thing started, we were like at 6 per 100,000. So numbers are still high. So someone mentioned waiting later till summer, later in the summer. I also would agree with that as well. And then adjust for COVID as necessary. That would be my recommendation, so thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Burt.
Renee, there's only one way to find out. You know, I wish we could have a crystal ball and look into the future. If we did, I certainly wouldn't be sitting in this chair right now doing what I do. So I, you know, I, sometimes you just got to go do it. So if that's what you want to do and you want to try, go get it done, is my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman.
Council, Mr. Sidaway.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, hearing the discussion tonight, you know, one thing I just wanted to point out, it's not too late for us to pivot either way, right? If we want movie night to just be regular movie night, it's not too late for that. And we're obviously in, you know, have been talking about and planning the split. The, this idea of maybe piloting fewer and later in the summer, sounds interesting to me. And I don't know how many, you know, maybe Renee and I talk afterwards, but just off the top of my head, you know, at least thinking about, you know, what if we just made at least the last movie night a teen movie night pilot? I don't, I don't know if one is enough, but we could, why don't we take this feedback and I'll get back with the mayor with a proposal.
I think that works. Perfect. All right, thank you, Renee. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind the Parks Director, I appreciate that input. The mayor's your boss, but we control your budget, so.
Just, just, pardon. Which is why I asked for more money. Okay, with that, counsel, we will move on to our action items this evening. Our first item up is the final plat modification continued from March 9, 2021 for Bria's subdivision number five, MFP 2021-003. I will turn this over to Mr. Dodson.
That, Mr. Mayor, that is not my project. I'm not really sure who is presenting that or not presenting it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I spoke with Sonya today, and basically, this is a final plat that was set over simply because there was a question on whether or not the fencing that was required in our code would be allowed. He has, Mr. Schultz has looked into that. The app from Meridian has told him they will not allow fencing in that location. Because of that, we actually have a UDC amendment coming through, actually was heard by P&amp;Z last week, to allow these in areas where there are linear recreational space. So we can go ahead and move forward. He isn't, he cannot legally build what we are requiring, so therefore, there's no reason to hold up his final plat this time. And because of that, we are changing our code to fit that, to make sure we line up with the irrigation district.
Okay, so there is no staff or applicant comments this evening? Is that what I'm gathering?
There's truly no staff. I don't know if Mr. Schultz is on the line.
He is. I'm just trying to make sure we, do we need applicant comments?
Yeah, unless he has some comment, that was our, that was the staff's position, that we can move forward.
Okay. Then with that, do I have a motion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Borton.
Quick question that Bill can probably answer is, with that code change, is it because in this particular area, it is going to be improved as linear open space and that with the new code will require the fencing obligation to go away?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Borton, so legally, he can't build a fence where we've, where we're telling where we want it because the irrigation district has an easement there. So he legally can't do it, so we can't require him to do something like that. But because of that, and because we've had these occasional interactions like this, we felt it was important to change the code, and it is a linear recreational space that he is constructing, it's a pathway. And so he, so he can go ahead and move forward with it because I don't see a reason to prevent the final plat from being approved at this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Hoagland. To follow up on that question, Bill, then, there are some requirements with that linear recreation area space in terms of slope and those types of things. That is something that staff will make sure is followed to our, to our standards.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, absolutely. Yeah, the staff will still have involvement with it. It's just the fencing piece doesn't need to be done.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Borton.
I will make a motion if there's no further discussion. Mayor, I move that we approve MFP 2021-0003 as presented in the stack report of April 20th.
I have a motion as second. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, call the roll. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borton.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Schrader. Hoagland.
Aye.
Burt.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Next item is public hearing continued from March 23, 2021 for Ambles Run subdivision, And I will turn this over to Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm not entirely sure how much you want me to go over, since we went over this the first time. The applicant did submit a, an email, a letter to council with a short update. It was updated, I believe, yesterday, or maybe it was this morning. They all blend together now. Regarding the HOA, I will leave that update to the applicant. But other than that, if you guys have any questions, I can answer them. I did not plan to present, but I can.
Counsel, any questions for Joe based upon that? Okay, then I will turn this over to the applicant. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is Michael Miller. Can you hear me?
Yes, you can say your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. Michael Miller. My address is 6300 West Tierra Lane, Boise, Idaho, 83704. So this is our project. You can see the landscape plan there. We came to you guys last month for six half-acre lots over there in northeast Meridian. At the council's request, which we are grateful for, we took some time and we went back to meet with the neighbors, specifically the neighbor to the east of us, Dale Hope, and we also met with the HOA president of the Dunwoody Court. And we sat at the table. It was a humanizing experience, and we talked about the development happening in the area, what they would like to see and what we would like to see. Dale Hope presented a plan for five lots, so we would decrease those lots on that eastern border there to two and keep the three on the western border. We conceded and said, okay, the HOA president said he would take that back to the HOA for a vote. We asked for a vote. We didn't get a vote in that, the future of our land. We just heard back from the HOA yesterday, and they do not want the five lots, they're not willing to compromise down to five lots. And so unfortunately, I don't have a compromise for you tonight. What you have before you is what we plan to do, six half-acre lots. There's some more findings that we've had. to do, six half acre lots. There's some more findings that we've had as we continue to discuss with the HOA, and we'll continue to discuss as we go forward. But I think with that, I'll stand for questions.
Council, any questions for the applicant? Seeing no questions. Mr. Cork, do we have anyone set up on this item?
Mr. Mayor, we have two. Both indicate they're representing the HOA, but first is Jeff Wilding.
Thank you. If you come forward and say your name and address, and if you're representing the HOA, you can be recognized for ten minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Jeff Wilding. I live at eighteen forty-two East Dunwoody Court, and I am the HOA president. We did, as Mr. Miller stated, we did meet with, with him. And as we discussed, there was a discussion around a five lot subdivision on Lot twenty-six. I told him I would take that to our HOA. We did not receive enough votes to approve a variance to our CCNRs for the five lots. Just to recap, remember, this is two point eight eight acres, and our CCNRs hold us to one acre lots for development of that two point eight eight acres. So from a legal perspective, that means two homes. The original intent of that property, because a lot line was moved, would have been three homes. So when they, when they asked us to go and talk to the HOA about the five lots, I put that before them, and it did not receive enough. I did not want to come back to this city council who had asked us to go and work out a compromise and want to come back empty-handed. I put out another vote and said to the HOA, would you be willing to go to four lots? Remember, that's a compromise for us, because legally it's two. Original intent would have been three. Let's go to four lots. And so I did communicate that to Mr. Miller, and the HOA did come back on that four lot compromise with more than enough. More than fifty-one percent of the neighborhood agreed that we could provide a variance to Mr. Miller and his project to go to four lots. And so we think we've compromised. We do want to see that land developed. We would love to have those lots in, or those folks on Lot twenty-six and the upcoming development of Lot twenty-eight continue to be part of our HOA Dunwoody subdivision. And so we think that that is a great middle ground. Are there questions?
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Sorry about that. My video was off. So I, you know, we're not here to discuss the workings of your homeowners association, and that's a private matter. But I am curious, curious, just in general, if you're asking the applicant to be compliant with a set of CCNRs, but that applicant isn't a member of your association or a voting member of your association, I want to understand how that works. I mean, it sounds like you're expecting the applicant to be compliant with the conditions and restrictions, but they're not permitted to have a vote in, on the board as a member of your, it sounds like all of the neighbors, am I understanding correctly, that all of the neighbors, or at least the ones that could be in attendance, voted on this, and it wasn't just a board decision? So could you help me understand that? Just because, you know, again, we're not here to referee what's going on in the association, but I just want some clarity of the process.
Thank you, Councilwoman Peralta, and Mayor and council members. So the Lot twenty-five and twenty-six, and this goes to another legal issue that I think we're probably ready to look over, and I think I see some heads nodding. Those were never supposed to be separated on the sale of Lot twenty-five. It precludes in our CCNRs that they can be sold separately. And the Millers sold that lot separately. And so there is a new resident that lives in Lot, the home on Lot twenty-five. And the residents, and it states in our CCNRs, are the people that vote. It doesn't expand. So in other words, there should have never been the separation of those properties. And now that there were, Mr. Miller wants to have a vote, but he's not a resident there. Yes, he owns the land, but in our CCNRs, the voting process is that the residents that are living in the homes are the people who vote. So that would be my answer as to why Mr. Miller was not included in the vote, because he's not a voting member of the HOA, because they moved. But remember, that split of the lot, if that would have never happened, this wouldn't even be a discussion. But again, I don't want to burn that up still. It's, it's the fact that he's not a resident there, nor those that he represent. And we have sixteen people in our subdivision, and I got sixteen votes. Does that help explain it, Councilwoman Peralta?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Perrow.
Yes, it does. I'm curious, though, the, the voting members for Lot twenty-five, I mean, in my opinion, if they, I know there might be different resonance there, but if that lot broke, broke off split when it wasn't supposed to, perhaps their vote is not, you know, valid. But that's, that's not a, that's not what we are here to determine. But I just wanted to understand, all of the things I've read in this application, the last hearing that we had, I needed clarity on that, so that we could get some, you know, for me, I want to be able to say, yes, I feel comfortable making a decision on this, or no, I think that the parties need to go back and have some further discussion. And that's why I wanted to understand that.
Thank you. Council, any further questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have Teri Pickens.
Okay, and it looks like she's online. Say your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Teri Pickens-Manwiler, three ninety-eight South Ninth Street, Suite two forty, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven oh two. I am the attorney for the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. And I was asked to come before you today to explain the legalities of what the project brings and the status of it. And I've already gone over the legalities of the splits and that in the previous hearing, but I did want to address the comments in the letter, the email that was produced by the applicant regarding his non-ability to vote. And I applaud Councilwoman Peralta for bringing it up, because it is an issue, and it is an issue that the HOA has to deal with. Whether this lot is recognized as a separate parcel for the county purposes is different as to whether it's recognized as a separate parcel as to the homeowners association. And it's a legal dynamic. They are two separate lots for the county tax purposes. However, under the CCNRs and the way that the homeowners association has always operated, the Lots twenty-five and twenty-six were one residential lot with one residential vote. If there was an opportunity under the CCNRs for those to split, it would have had to have been done through the homeowners association. And at that time, at, when the split was done, there would have been an assignment, and a new residential lot would have been formed, creating an additional vote. That didn't happen here. And so Mr. Miller, while I appreciate he still owns the property, or his mother owns the property, they don't have a vote as residents of the homeowners association under the CCNRs. While I know that puts them in a bit of a conundrum in terms of having a say as to whether or not they get to subdivide their lot, they should have gone through the process the first, correctly, the first time. And they didn't. And that's just a consequence that they're paying now. The, the fact that the homeowners association did have a vote, would agree to a compromise on four lots, really is as best as we could hope for or promise Mr. Miller and his proposed development. Because that is not the plan that is before this council today, we'd ask that the council reject the plan and ask them to resubmit a different plan that would, that would comply with the city code, but, or, and the county code, but would, that would also satisfy the problem that the homeowners association is facing. And that is, if this lot, six lot subdivision is approved, they have absolutely no choice but to go to the district court and seek redress. And that redress would come in the form of injunctive relief to prevent the actual construction of a six lot subdivision. Despite the comments made in the email from Mr. Miller, I am quite confident that the CCNRs do apply, that the one acre lot restriction on the property will be enforced by the district court. And that puts them in a much worse position than if they just make the compromise that the homeowners association has put forth. So with that, again, we do ask that the council deny the application, because it is our position that it's going to be moot, because there's not going to be an opportunity for the construction to actually commence on a six lot subdivision in the Dunwoody Homeowners Association. And I will stand for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
A question, Ms. Pickens, just something that Mr. Wilding said that I just, I just found curious, is if I was a renter in that current subdivision, I would have a vote on the HOA, because it said, it was stated that it is the resident who has the vote.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Hogan, thank you for the question. So how most homeowners associations operate, is the owner of the property is considered the resident under the CCNRs? The owner can certainly give his proxy to a tenant, and that tenant can vote on behalf of the owner. The owner is the, considered the resident under the CCNRs?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Pickens, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Council, any further questions? Mr. Cork, do we have anybody else sign up?
There were no other signups indicating they wish to testify.
Okay, well, if there's anybody in the room that would like to provide testimony on this item, if you'd like to come forward now and state your name and address for the record, or if there's anybody online that would like to provide testimony, you can do so by using the raise your hand feature, and we can bring you into the meeting to provide comments. Seeing nobody in either fashion wishing to provide additional testimony, I will turn this back over to the applicant for any final comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Jeff Wilding, Teri. We, you know, we've been at this project for eight months, talking about the legality of the split and CCNRs. And those issues are something that we believe it should be handled outside of this hearing tonight. But some important things to keep in mind is that the split happened with the HOA knowing about it. And they, at that time, didn't have, they don't have any bylaws. I still haven't seen any bylaws. The actual articles of incorporation, excuse me, for the HOA were filed a month ago. So it didn't even legally exist until a month ago. So if we're looking at the legality of how the process should be for voting, for lot splits, et cetera, we have some serious issues. And our lawyer maintains that we are homeowners there. We don't have homes there yet, because we need to be annexed into Meridian, but that we, we are entitled to a vote. We are either part of the Dunwoody HOA, and therefore, subject to the CCNRs, or we're not. They can't have it both way, both ways. And it also calls into question the fact that, you know, they've, you know, stated that we are rushing this project forward, but we've taken, we've taken our time with this project. And the fact that they've only filed their articles of incorporation a month ago, calls into question, you know, their motives as well. After sitting down to speak with them, I, I grew up in that neighborhood. And when I drove to school, I drove down Eagle Road when it was two lanes. And there was no development at that time. And having seen the development happening around it now, I actually can very much sympathize with those homeowners there. There's a lot of, you know, traffic coming through. They have new lines drawn, and Locust Grove is getting busier. But we're presenting six half acre lots tonight. It's a good plan. It's a good plan. It provides a diversity of development. There's a lot of open space. Reducing two more homes, so that those lots can be larger, ostensibly just the yards can be larger. It seems to me that it becomes a little bit elitist at a certain point, to be frank. Why exclude two more possible homeowners, the chance to live in a really beautiful community? Because they have these fears of development. What we have is six half acre lots R2. You don't see a lot of this. We stand confident in our position, not only in the plan, but in the legality of our position. So with that, I think I'll stand for further questions.
Thank you. Council, any further questions or comments at this time? Councilman Borton.
Just a comment. I appreciate the parties having taken some time to try to visit and give it the old college try to see if there's some way to, to see eye to eye on resolving the conflict. But it hasn't happened. Their remarks with regards to the factual disputes between private parties and issues to be taken to court, that very well may happen, but this isn't the court for that, frankly. The private dispute is something that's purely private. So the application before us is a lawful application that the city's entitled to act on and can act on. If Mr. Miller is subject to a suit from a private entity, that will be resolved in that proceeding, but not this one. There's a variety of times where we could have a dispute between private parties that, that is outside the bounds of our purview and our review. This is an annexation and zone, and that's it. So I don't agree or disagree with what Ms. Pickens-Manwiler had raised. Frankly, this isn't the forum to try and resolve that dispute between the HOA and Mr. Miller. If that ever comes up, it will be somewhere else. So I say all of that because I don't think trying to reconcile what did or didn't happen is relevant, frankly, to the decision we have to make. I think our decision is, is this annexation and zone appropriate in the city's best interest? And if they have a legal dispute after the fact, then that's between those private parties. So I'm comfortable to proceed on the record before us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Strater.
Just to offer a little bit different take and explain my perspective, I remain uninterested in stepping over an HOA in Meridian. My common sense reading of it is that it was one acre lots. And I don't think it's in the city's best interest to potentially become legally entangled in a private dispute. I also feel that a compromise was offered by the HOA, and I'm a little disappointed that Mr. Miller hasn't taken it. But it's certainly his right not to. But I don't think it's in our best interest to move forward as a city with this dispute happening. So I just, I have a different take on it, and I would be voting against the application tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hogan.
From my understanding, we have three options. We can approve, we can deny, we can continue. I don't think that'll happen. But I want to ask Mr. Nary, we have, there are two parts to this request. One is annexation and zoning with an R2 zone. And the second request is a preliminary plat consisting of six single-family residential lots. I suppose another option is we could do the annexation and zoning and not take up the preliminary plat. Is that an option?
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Hogan, yes, that is an option for the, for the council to consider. You can simply annex the property and give it a zone. Those two actions are required to be done together. You don't have to agree with the plat that's being proposed, and you can deny that. And the, the applicant does need some direction from the council as to what you would like to see. If you don't want a six lot subdivision of this type, and you're going to reject it, then the applicant has the right to ask, what did you want instead?
Thank you, Mr. Nary.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question for Joe. Joe, again, going through the staff report, I don't think there's any issues that are necessarily outstanding for council on this application, if council were to move forward. Is that correct?
Councilman Cavanagh, that is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
If there's not additional discussion at least yet, I will move to close the public hearing on H twenty-two zero one two four.
Second, I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it.
Mr. Mayor, for just the discussion start.
Councilman Borden.
While Councilman Holton brings up an interesting wrinkle, I'm generally supportive of it, as, as described earlier, both the annexation zone and, and the plat itself. And if there's a different proceeding that resolves it, the dispute between the two of them, I can't reconcile and resolve that here. I think that's, that's a full litigation issue that has a lot more facts and angles and turns than we'll ever get at an end. I've litigated these things, and it's complex, so it's for that reason that I'm comfortable proceeding today.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Borden. In many cases, I wish the, the conversations that happened this week ago, this week, happened a month and a half ago. You always hope that folks can sit around and come to a conclusion that works for everybody and appreciate both sides doing their best to try and make that work. I don't have any issues with the, the application as presented. I'm happy to be supportive of it tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
I agree with councilmembers Borden and Cavanagh. I, I don't have any opposition to the annexation zoning request and the plat as it sits, but I would like to invite Mr. Neri, if he has any additional advice for us. I, I do have concerns about approving this with where it is, with, with the, you know, what's happening in that neighborhood, but I don't know if we have any legal obligation or, or, you know, I don't know that, that, that there's any issue on the city's part. I think I agree with Councilman Borden that it's a private matter, but just curious if Mr. Neri wants to speak up. If he doesn't, then that's okay, too.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't really foresee the city being engaged in the legal issues between them. So although, as Councilmember Holton asked the question on can you approve the annexation and not the plat, you certainly can. It's, he, he will either have the legal ability to build these six lots as he's requested, and he'll have to resolve the issues with the Dunwoody subdivision to do that, or he won't have the ability to do it. So it really isn't going to involve us. Really, at the most, is he's going to request a building permit, and we're going to get some legal notification saying, don't issue it, or he's going to get a notification that he can't use it. So I don't really foresee any real involvement from the city's perspective. It's just messy, and that's where I think Councilmember Schrader was coming from. It's a little messier. But again, he'll either have the ability to build this, or he won't. But what we do won't have any effect on, on that outcome, as, as Councilmember Borden has stated.
And I, I'll just weigh in here from my perspective. I tend to fall with the Councilman Schrader's position that while I understand, at least in my own legal opinion about who's got what and who has what responsibly not, I do feel like if the city moves forward, we are just setting up neighbors to sue each other one way or the other, but maybe that's going to happen anyways. And that's, that's the unfortunate situation that I feel like the city is in, is we're being asked to make a decision where we know someone's going to sue somebody at the end of the night, and maybe it's going to happen regardless of which way the decision goes. So that's unfortunate to be, or the city, but I don't, it would be nice if there were still more to get this right, so that everyone can avoid, sorry attorneys on this call, the legal fees.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
I, this is an interesting application. I, I, I tend to believe for myself that, I just, I, I probably am not in support of this application this evening, only because of the messiness and the dumpster fire the situation is. I mean, at the end of the day, I, I don't want to annex a dumpster fire into our, into our city. We don't need it. And, and I, I would, I would, it's just, just too messy. So I, it's not ready to be annexed into our city, and, and until then, maybe by not annexing this into the city, maybe it will create more collaboration between these two parties. So that's my point of view. Go collaborate more, figure it out, and come back to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
This is a question for Joe or Bill, but if, if we deny this, they could not come back with an application for a year for this property?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so the, the application for the annexation can be re-applied. There's, there's no prohibition. What the code says, you can't come back with substantially the same application for the plat. So, so yes, that, there is a one-year prohibition. Now, again, it's the, it's a staff call of it's substantially the same plat that's being requested, so it just depends on what it looks like.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
So if we turn it down and the applicant wins in court, he will have to wait to come back with the substantially same plat. Is that your understanding?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Agreed.
I, I guess, Mr. Mayor, to, to comment, then, I, this, these are difficult decisions, and it's not any fun. If I were to look at this and what we heard, the presentation of what's being presented, and the neighbors were fine with it, I'm, I'm inclined to support this application. Single family homes on a half acre, I'm sure we've had this happen before. The next application up, people be jumping for joy going, yes, that's what we want in our neighborhood. So, but this is a different neighborhood, and they're one acre lots, and, you know, having, single family homes on acreage are, are, are getting much rarer to have in our community. So I like the fact that these are half acre lots. Will they be one acre lots? I don't know. I mean, that's a market analysis, and I'm not in that position to say. I married into a dairy farm family, and we kept an acre, and it's a big lot, lots of Looking at it, if, if the neighbors are in opposition, and I look at this and going, mm, half acre, nicely appointed, we've seen what they're planning on doing, it will start the development for the other properties behind it, and I think went to the, to the That, that's what makes it a difficult decision. If, if I just look at this, taking it at face value, yes or no, I, I would be a yes. And if it doesn't implicate us in any legal issue, I'm, you know, we'll, we'll just see what plays out in, in court. If, if we deny it, will it ever come back to us and remains vacant property? Because I, you know, I'm, I don't know what the applicant will do, and that's none of my business, so I just have to figure out what my vote would be with an application as presented and how it fits our community, although it doesn't fit that particular neighborhood that are one acre lots. So like I said, these aren't always easy decisions.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sure.
Mr. Neri can correct me if I'm wrong, but if the council does see fit to, well, I see a couple of options, I guess, see fit to approve the annexation and zoning and the plat. It is my understanding you have the power to limit the number of lots, and per the four lot that the HOA proposed, you, you could approve it with that. Second of that, if, is my, also in my understanding of the process, let's say you approve the six lot at the pre-plat, our code does allow a final plat to have a reduction of building lots without having to go through a council meeting, a public hearing. So there could be potential that we approve the pre-plat, the applicant and the HOA have further discussions, maybe even litigation, I don't know. But, and then the applicant eventually settles on the four lot, they can final plat that within two years, and that should be, that would be no harm, no foul. Not to throw a wrench in all your plans here, but I can assure you, when I saw this get assigned to me, I thought this would be the simplest one of the year, and so far, that is not the case.
Councilman Pro.
Joe, I really appreciate you speaking up because that was exceptionally helpful. I, I feel like that was very helpful to me. I know the plats, the preliminaries expire after two years, although the annexation and zoning would be permanent. So that's sort of been in the back of my mind as we've talked about, you know, this is not something that plat isn't tied to this property indefinitely, but I appreciate the clarification that the final plat could be modified. Now, is it just a reduction in the number of lots, or if there's other modifications? I mean, how much different can that final plat be? And is that something we need to consider or not?
Councilman Pro, that's a great question. It's my understanding that as long as the road stays in the same place, and it's just a reduction of building lots, there are no common lots, so that wouldn't matter either. But a direction of building lots that it would just, I could approve it at staff level, and then obviously it would come before you guys on the consent agenda in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Not to make it more complicated, too, but Councilmember Holton asked, you know, would this come back? So Joe's suggestion and recommendation is excellent because that's, that is a factor that it can, they can either work this out to allow the six, or five, or four, or three, or whatever it ends up being, and we can approve that. If, if you don't approve it, then it will remain in the county. They could split it in the county and into two lots, as, as the Dunwoody's estates or Dunwoody subdivision would prefer, and there'll be two houses built in the county and won't be in the city. So that's their outcome, whether that's a good or bad outcome, that's what happens. If it would, if it remained in the county, it would then get split in the county, and there'd have to be two more homes built on a septic and a well in the county right next to a city subdivision. But all of Dunwoody is anyway, but these are the ones that are immediately adjacent to Vienna Woods, I believe.
Mr. Mayor.
Joe.
Just to clarify the, with the HOA, they could split it into lots, but it is zoned RUT, so it's already under the minimum five acres, so Ada County will only let them build one home. They could ask for a rezone, but because they're adjacent to city zoning, Ada County would probably just kick them back to us.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
It's a shame that we closed the public hearing, because I think if I were in the applicant's shoes, I'd, I don't know, I, it might, it might be interesting to hear their opinion. The vote's very close, and at this point, time is money, and so if there's a lawsuit, that could take a long time to move forward. And, and there's the aspect of maybe it gets approved, it's possible to denial, in which case that, that also costs more time. I don't know. I, I guess I didn't hear him offer up a compromise earlier of a smaller number of lots, but just thinking out loud, I don't know if anyone else would be interested to hear the applicant's feedback at this point and reopen the public hearing.
Let me ask Mr. Miller with a thumbs up if he'd like to make any further comments after hearing this. So do I have a motion, motion to reopen the public hearing?
We reopen the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion of second to reopen the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I realize this is a very complicated situation. I've been in it for eight months, and I'm, I'm tired, too, and I have a lot of sympathy to the Dunwoody homeowners, and the five lot compromise was presented to us by the homeowner right adjacent to us in the Dunwoody subdivision. So he most likely voted yes for five lots, and we still like that plan. Four lots, as we continue to incur lawyer fees and time, it just becomes less, just less, the numbers just don't look as good. But, you know, maybe some more time to talk with the community would be, would be helpful. I, I do believe that we can come to a consensus. The table that we sat at, at Jeff Wilding's house was friendly and collaborative. We weren't able to meet with the rest of the HOA at that time. We, we weren't invited to that meeting, but we ended up going to Dale Hope's house afterwards, and, you know, we do have a spirit of collaboration despite how, you know, quote unquote messy this is. We still believe that these, these lots, whether it's six or five, provide some really beautiful open space slots for that area that will be a good blend between Vienna Woods and, and Dunwoody. So if you do approve us tonight, I, I can promise we will continue to have the conversations. Thank you.
Counsel, any further questions or comments at this time?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I apologize, Mr. Miller. I'm just a little dense, maybe, but are you asking for a continuance, or would you like us to vote on your application?
Thank you, Councilwoman Schrader. I would like for you to vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, counsel, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? If there's no further questions from Mr. Miller. Councilman Schrader.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion of second to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay? The ayes have it. Counsel, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I think we should vote on Joe Borden's motion from earlier.
We've yet to have a motion for Mr. Borden. We've had comments, but no motions.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can make a motion. I just, I appreciate hearing the dialogue from fellow council members on this. Annexation, even a small parcel is a pretty serious deal, and a big commitment from the city to, to bring any parcel in, large or small. So if there's, I don't have concern, but if there's, I'm pretty strongly concerned from three or four of us, that's a big deal to me, so. I'm supportive of the application, but I just, I'm not certain that my fellow council members are there, which, which matters.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
I think one of the things I heard that, that really kind of puts me to one, to, to approving this is, is the fact that by the annexation and approval, it could go to court, and he can't develop it, that's fine, but we control that, that property moving forward. Anything that happens there, if, if maybe if he goes to four, water, sewer, all of that, it's, it's ready to go. We can, we can service that, we can do it, and, and to me, that makes a difference. It's, it's in Meridian now, it, it should be a part of Meridian officially, and, and then we'll see what, what happens down the road.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just one quick thought. I don't know if my fellow council members know this, and I don't know how accurate I am in, in this, but I, I'm fairly certain that now our planning department has a say in, or at least collaborates with the Ada County Planning and Zoning, or Planning Department in regard to, you know, development that are close to our, our city services and our, in annexed property in the city of Meridian. So if your concern is that, you know, we don't have any control of this property, I mean, we sort of do to a certain extent still, so just want to make sure that we're all aware of that.
I would concur that I think we have sufficient influence in the future of this property, but I'm not concerned about how it would possibly develop absent that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
The public hearing's closed, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve H 2020 0124.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve this item. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, Cork, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Borden.
Aye.
Cavanagh.
Aye.
Pro.
Aye.
Schrader.
Schrader.
No.
Hoagland.
Aye.
Burr.
No.
Order two, item passes. Okay. Thank you very much. Counsel, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break before we get into the next item. We do have a full room, so we'll want to restart right at 8:05 if we can. So we're in recess.
Elaine Clay called.
Again? I haven't seen anything.
All right, counsel. We will go ahead and come back from recess. 8:07 for the record. And next item on the agenda is public hearing for Movado mixed-use, H 2020-0123. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor, I don't know what word I just said, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. As noted, the application before you now is for the Movado mixed-use development. The two applications before each night are for a conditional use permit and a DA modification. I'll go over briefly just the, what's around it, so that we're all aware. To the north of the site is RUT zoning and single-family residential that's still in the county. To the east is city of Boise, and some undeveloped land, but it does have some mini-storage approved there. To the south is R15 zoning and the Movado subdivision, with some directly to the south is attached single-family. To the west is more CG zoning with multifamily apartments. As noted, it is part of the Movado Estates subdivision. Movado Greens, it's been modified a couple times. It is part of the mixed-use regional comprehensive plan, or I should say, future land use designation. The summary of the request is as follows. As noted, it's for a conditional use permit, which is for a multifamily development consisting of 66 attached units, 56 units being on the west side of Movado Way, and 10 units on the east side of Movado Way, and is on 6.8 acres of land currently zoned CG. This request also includes a development agreement modification to modify the concept plan approved with the existing agreements, and shown here, to include a mix of multifamily and commercial uses on the remaining 6.8 acres of the Movado development. The DA mod is requested for the purpose of including a new development plan for this area of the Movado Greens development, to consist of both commercial and residential uses, instead of solely commercial. The existing DA includes a concept plan for this area from 2017, when the property received DA modification, to change the number and layout of apartment units west of this site and along Overland, now known as the Silverstone Apartments. The existing concept plan depicts a number of office, retail, and general commercial buildings. The applicant believes the existing concept plan for this area of the agreement is not feasible. The applicant states this is because the site is separated from the Eagle-Overland area by residential, and is too far east to accommodate 56,000 square feet of commercial space. Therefore, the applicant is proposing a new concept plan depicting three commercial pad sites and 66 multifamily dwelling units in the form of townhome-style dwellings. Staff supports the reduced area of commercial within this area of the overall development. The commercial area is now proposed to hold approximately 27,500 square feet, and is shown completely along Overland Road, which helps with the visibility. In the western half of the site, the commercial is separated from the 56 units of the multifamily residential by a shared driveway that has, is the access to the public street network for both of the commercial and the residential uses. It also connects to the west to the Silverstone Apartment site. In the eastern half of the site, the applicant also shows a larger commercial building that's also along Overland, with the remaining area of the lot shown as parking, and the 10 remaining multifamily units in the southeast corner of the site. The applicant presented a thorough case for this area of the mixed-use regional designation to lack true viability as a premier location for 56,000 square feet of commercial area due to its location being more than a half mile from the Eagle-Overland intersection, which is the central hub of the mixed-use regional area. Some commercial should remain on these parcels, but staff does agree with the applicant that the proposed amount with the incorporation of townhome-style multifamily is adequate to meet a majority of the mixed-use policies. Access is proposed via driveways that connect to South Movado Way, a collector's street that currently exists and bisects the property. The driveway within the northwest section of the project, so this driveway here, will connect to the driveway stub from Silverstone Apartments directly to the west, as noted. This driveway acts as a border between the proposed commercial buildings and the multifamily townhomes, but also offers the integration. South of this driveway are the drivials for the 56, for 56 of the 66 multifamily townhomes, with the required parking located on both sides. Southeast portion of this area contains a segment of drive aisle that is over 150 feet in length, which would be this overall length here, which technically requires a fire turnaround and terminus. Instead, staff recommends this segment be reduced in length to not require the turnaround and save a ton of space. Therefore, a few parking spaces in this area may need to be removed to accommodate this. Overall, the residential portion of the site proposes 139 parking stalls, exceeding the 132 required. The east side of the development proposes an additional commercial building, as well as 10 more multifamily units with driveway accesses to Movado Way, one in the north, and one in the south that aligns with the public road to the west, and will also align with a drive aisle access to the Boise property to the east. The submitted site plan shows more than the minimum parking required, and drivials that meet the UDC and fire department requirements for the commercial portion of the east side. The proposed dwellings at the very southeast corner of the project are placed with minimal room to spare surrounding the buildings, but do appear to show compliance with dimensional standards, including parking. According to ACHD, the proposed driveway connections meet their district offset policies by being 220 feet from the intersection of Movado and Overland. However, these two northernmost proposed driveways will not meet offset requirements should the Overland and Movado intersection ever be signalized in the future. In this case, these two accesses, which to be clear are these two driveway accesses here, would be limited to write-in, write-out accesses only, and the applicant is aware of this potential. The proposed site plan appears to show compliance with all UDC requirements for both the commercial and residential portions of the site, except for that one area of the drive aisle previously discussed. The multifamily development is required to provide common and private open space based on the specific use standards. The applicant's open space exhibit only shows the 56 units on the west half of the project, and they show approximately 135 square feet of private open space per unit, which exceeds the 80 square feet that is required by code. Staff recommended that prior to the council meeting, the applicant should show the 10 units on the east side with a new open space exhibit, but that was not presented to staff. The common open space is to be shared between all 66 units, and the submitted plan shows 19,561 square feet of common open space being provided, which exceeds the requirement based on the size of the dwellings, the number of dwellings, of 16,500 square feet. The open space exhibit also does not show an area of land that is on the east parcel, which is approximately 2,000 square feet, and would be qualifying, which would be, oh, sorry, which is that area just north of the 10 units on the east side. The revised open space exhibit should have shown that area as well. The proposed open space consists of a buffer between the multifamily residential, which is here, between the multifamily residential and the existing attached residential to the south, a mu between two of the eightplex units, or eightplex buildings, a plaza area along Movado Way that contains the amenities, and other small areas throughout the site that meet minimum dimensional standards. Despite the proposed open space exceeding the minimum required by code, the only area large enough for a more active open space would be that area south of the plaza that abuts Movado Way, and has approximately 3,000 square feet in area. The seating area proposed by the applicant and shown on the revised site plan should provide an additional area for commercial users to sit and relax, which is this area here, which was added after some discussions with the applicant prior to the initial publication of the staff report. Furthermore, the development, the developer of the subject parcels is the same as those for the rest of Movado Estates and Movado Greens directly south of the development. It can be assumed these residents will have the opportunity to utilize the existing pedestrian network to access those other, and larger, open space areas within the Movado development. It has not been confirmed or denied by the applicant. Based on these 66 proposed units, a minimum of three amenities are required. The applicant has proposed three amenities, one from each category, as required by code. These three are an enclosed bike storage, which is here, a plaza area, and a coffee kiosk, which would be the building here. The applicant submitted conceptual elevations of the eightplex units, and since the staff report publication, has submitted conceptual elevations for the units on the east parcel. All elevations show two-story structures with varying roof profiles along the rooflines, and mostly lap-siding exteriors. Staff will analyze all elevations for compliance with the Architectural Standards Manual at the time of design review submittal, which is required for attached units. Furthermore, staff has recommended a condition of approval that the same design elements are incorporated in both the multifamily and commercial areas of the site to ensure integration and congruency in design. Future commercial buildings will also require design review. A side note to this is that prior to the council meeting, I believe it was yesterday, I received additional elevations from the applicant showing that they are willing to make the lower, the southern units, single-story rather than two-story. I will let the applicant go into more detail about how that will work as well. At the commission hearing, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend denial of the subject applications, which again are conditional use permit and development agreement modification. There's a lot of neighborhood opposition, and I'm assuming they are here tonight as well. The main issues provided by the public were the quality of the proposed amenities, and the lack of area for children to play, concern over no updated traffic study being required, as well as the assumed increase of traffic from additional multifamily units, the value of adjacent homes being brought down by the proposed multifamily development, proximity of the two-story buildings to the existing single-story homes south of the site, which I think the applicant presumes they have mitigated that, and issues with, I should say, the property was approved for commercial, and so they would prefer commercial over residential. Commission discussed all these items, to be precise, the overall difficulty of losing the commercial area to residential, specifically more multifamily. They discussed how the proposed coffee kiosk works, which is intended to be a self-serve, but is stocked by the property management company, the challenge of revising a master plan community that was approved with a certain amount of commercial in order to incorporate more residential, and again, lose some of the commercial component, lack of integration of the proposed residential and commercial, and a question of, do the proposed changes match the comp plan, which was one of the reasons for denial. The commission did not change any staff recommendation, but staff did make some revisions based upon discussions prior to the commission hearing, and those are noted through strike, by strike-through and underlying changes in the conditions of approval. -- by strike through and underlying changes in the conditions of approval and are related to some of the changes from the revised site plan that was received. Again, to be clear, commission recommended denial for the following reasons: that it does not fit with the comprehensive plan, that the proximity of the proposed two-story apartments to the existing homes is too close, and that it does not fit with the existing character of the neighborhood. Since the commission hearing, 10 pieces of public testimony were submitted, nine against, one in favor. The issues presented in the ones that were against the hearing, or against the application, cite the same issues as presented previously and presented during the commission hearing. The one in favor discussed the viability of the commercial by a commercial developer. I hope you all had the time to read those. Following that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Hey, Joe.
Ms. Mayor.
Councilman Burt.
Joe, did you -- you mentioned that the applicant had provided some new elevations and such. Are we going to see those, or did -- okay, I'll wait. Thank you.
I presumed Heath would have that covered, but the initial review of it is going to be the same type of thing, lap sighting and adequate modulation.
Counsel, any other further questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Question, maybe for, I guess for Joe. I know that we didn't get necessarily -- is the letter that we got from West Ada reflective of the new impacted students this change would bring, or is that letter speak to the way the -- the way the plan was originally approved?
Councilman Cavanagh, I'm not entirely sure if the two-story to single-story change, if that's what you're referring to, loses any units. I have not been told that. Regardless, it, the West Ada letter is from previous, so it would be based off of 66 units.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor, one more, if I can.
Councilman Cavanagh.
Joe, in your report, you touched on that the multifamily and the commercial would need to have the same design style. Is that what I heard you say? Align the buildings to essentially look alike? Is that what I'm understanding?
Councilman Cavanagh, it's part of our, both the comprehensive plan and our Architectural Standards Manual, to mostly the mixed-use policies, to have some of the architecture and materials match between the commercial and residential when they share the same site.
Okay. Thanks.
They should not match completely, obviously. That would not be the goal, just to have some of the same elements.
Just want to make sure I heard you correct. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Like a roof, maybe, would be?
I mean, maybe. I mean, we can all have a cabana. That could work.
Okay. All right. With that, we will ask the applicant to please come forward, state their name and address there, and be recognized for 15 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and it's good to see everybody live and in the flesh. It's been a number of Zoom hearings for me. We even set up a Zoom studio in our office to be able to handle all of them, so this is nice to be back in person. Heath Clark, 251 East Front Street, representing the applicant, Conger Group. This is an application that helps get a very successful project over the finish line, and it helps add another needed housing type in the city. As you might know, Movado's been a great project on over 100 acres off of Overland Road, but despite our best efforts, the 6.8 acre site that's on the north of the project has been slow to develop. So, you know, I think it's important for us to jump in and just really focus on why we're here. Let's just put that out there very first. If you look back at the original approval, the original approval included 56,000 square feet of commercial. That was a lot for this location. It was not dictated by the city by a condition of approval. It was something that the seller wanted, and so it was included in the original proposal as a result. Since that original approval, this has been aggressively marketed, and really to no success and for a number of reasons. Joe really hit a lot of this, and so I don't want to repeat his words, but it is, it does have this double-edged sword of it's in the general vicinity of Overland and Eagle. And you have Silverstone to the west, you have the Eagleview Commons, the BVA is working onto the northwest. You know, they're going to be attracting the large kind of custom users that might be able to sit into that second tier. And when I say second tier, I'm talking about the second row of commercial that we're looking to replace with some of these townhomes. So I think as we talk about that, I think it's important to understand what is allowed on this site as a CG zone. So it's CG, general, retail, service, commercial. Allowed uses are per the code, quote, "largest scale and broadest mix of retail, office, service, and light industrial uses." So what does that, what does that mean? That means that it can have light industrial. That means that it can have flex space. That means it can have fuel sales. It can have a car wash. It can have vehicle repair sales, rental and service. It also has, because it's CG, we want to encourage commercial development, so it has smaller setbacks. It has a 65-foot maximum height. There is the 25-foot landscape buffer to residential, but otherwise, this is not, I think Joe put it this way during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, this is not a quote-unquote "soft zone." This is a zone that allows a number of relatively intense uses, and Joe's description, I think, is absolutely spot-on. So let's look at what we're proposing. This proposal affects, again, this 6.8 acres on the north. It would be converted a portion to townhouse rentals, and then we would retain 27,500 square feet of commercial with about 13,000. Let's see if our mouse is going to come back here. Doesn't look like it. What's that? Okay. So there's about 13,000 square feet in the building that's on the northeast that you can see on this plan, about 7,000-ish right there and 7,000 in the other. So in other words, commercial will still be there, but it will be there in a footprint that we think can actually be marketed successfully. And I really want to stress something about the housing type that's being proposed. These are not apartments. These are townhouse rentals. They're not the imposing, you know, stacked apartments that you would generally picture and have been developed elsewhere. They're more expensive to build, but they're very popular, and it's something that we really don't have much of in this market. It's something that I really like, that I'm kind of, it brings back memories for me because I lived in a townhouse rental for the three years of law school, and my first kid was born there. You know, I think this is a great product. There's a good reason to do it. As Joe mentioned, it's going to have targeted amenities. It's going to have a plaza area. There's going to be carports. There's going to be an open barbecue and picnic area, and then we're going to have what Joe called the coffee kiosk. It's going to be an indoor kitchen that's going to be controlled. The property manager will address and stock. I think it's a really cool idea. And then we also have a bicycle barn for the residents. So all of the amenities are covered. One thing that I want to hit up front, too, is the issue of traffic. So as you know, when Movado was approved, there was a traffic impact study that was completed. The mitigation was identified at that time. With this proposal and the replacement of the townhomes for what was previously commercial, the overall number of trips that will be generated by the development actually reduces by 330. So the traffic impacts are actually lower than what has already been approved. That's why ACHD approved this at the staff level. And I'll just say, you know, for what it's worth, we are in agreement with ACHD's conditions. We're also in agreement with the other agency conditions, and I'll talk about this more later. We're in agreement with staff's conditions that are still in your staff report. As Joe mentioned, we were concerned with the original conditions of approval, and we discussed them with staff prior to the P&amp;Z hearing, and this is why this, what resulted as a result of that was this plaza area that you see here on the screen. It was an idea to create yet another amenity, which is a seating area that would be shared between these two commercial buildings on the north part of the project. So that leads us to the P&amp;Z hearing and some of the concerns that were discussed. You know, obviously, that meeting covered a lot of ground. Joe's mentioned some of those issues. I'll focus on these issues here, and then we can circle up on any other questions that I might leave unaddressed as we go through it. But the issues that I'm going to really focus on are the loss of commercial area, the relationship between the existing single-level duplexes on the south boundary of this 6.8 acres, and then the, what was referred to as the challenge of modifying a development agreement in a master plan community. So let's talk about a loss of commercial area, and Mark Bottles is here, so I don't want to steal all of his thunder, and you've received a copy of his letter in your packet. You know, we know that commercial is a priority, but it really has to be in the right location and in the right amount to be successful. This, as Mark's going to discuss further tonight, you know, just hasn't proven to be the right amount and in the right location. You know, we're not making this request lightly. You know, despite a great market for the last four years, we just haven't been able to make this work in this location, and that's why we're asking to reconfigure. So Counselmember Burnt, I think this will help answer your question about the, this is the design for the single levels. So if we're going to make this change, you know, I know that council wants to make sure that this is going to work, so we need to look at how the project transitions and its relationship with the adjoining properties. So let's start with the properties to the south. On the south, we have single-level duplexes. Those are the existing neighbors to the south in the Movado Greens area. In order to ensure that there is no inconsistency whatsoever in terms of housing types, the applicant is proposing to reduce the townhomes on the south boundary to single level only. So what does that mean? That means that in addition to only being single level, we also reduce our number of units by six. So we go from 66 townhome units overall for the whole property down to 60. About 10% of the residential units are sacrificed to make sure that there just is no question about that. There really is no inconsistency. This is very much like-on-like, and it shows the commitment to make sure that that's addressed. I think it's also important to look at this from the perspective of how it interacts with the properties to the west and to the east. So on the west, you have the multi-story apartments. You can see they have the roads that align, and we're going to be using the same service aisles. With regard to the question of a potential closure at, which I'm sure may come up as a question, you know, if the light is ever signalized and that those northernmost accesses become right-in, right-out, first of all, it really needs to be there to make the commercial viable, but there is also the ability to go out to the west and out through the apartments if that ever is right-in, right-out. I think Counselmember Burnt, I saw you make a note on that one, so I thought I'd try to hit that one up front. So on the west, we have this consistency that those apartments were planned, the drive aisles come across right where the commercial was shown before. On the east, we have self-storage against, let me say that again, to the east, the city of Boise has approved a mixed-use project. That's what you see here. That includes self-storage that would be against our commercial building on the northeast. There's commercial that's up against Overland, providing the same kind of visibility that we're talking about here, and then there are fourplexes on the south that match up with our townhomes, so aligns with that perfectly as well. So overall, we have apartments to the west, exactly as proposed. On the east, we have the self-storage against our commercial, and on the south, we've restricted ourselves to single-level townhomes against single-level duplexes. So it's, again, very much like-on-like. It fits within the area, and it's more than generous with that, with, by adding that single-level restriction. So finally, I'll talk a little bit about whether there should be a modification to a development agreement, and the P&amp;Z expressed some discomfort about whether, you know, under what circumstances modifications to development agreements should be allowed. You know, we get the concern. You know, development agreements are important. They provide for predictability for developers and for the neighbors and for the city. But, you know, we all understand that as time goes by, circumstances change. There's a need to course correct, especially in large multiphase applications. No one's crystal ball is perfect, and that's why the city allows for DA modifications under appropriate circumstances and per UDC Section 11-5B3. So in other words, the question is not whether a DA can be modified. The question is whether it's appropriate in this case. And we think it's appropriate. You know, obviously, we wouldn't be here if we didn't think so. Again, we've been involved with this project from the beginning. The residential to the south has been a great success. We're very proud of it. This isn't a matter of coming up with a whole different concept and changing the face of the development. In fact, what it is, is trying to take a great project, protect that entry with a use that we know is consistent, and make it work for everyone while getting that commercial property in a place where it can actually be developed. Again, the amount of commercial that was proposed here was excessive. It was just too much. The second tier doesn't work. It's been tried. This honors the original entitlement with appropriate compromises to make sure that those neighbors to the south are protected, and it matches the properties to the west and the east, and reduces the overall traffic impact. So with that, I'll wrap up. A couple items that I would just mention on the kind of technical side, on, there are two applications that are in front of you. Of course, one of them is the conditional use permit. So obviously, with a conditional use permit, we're focused on the impacts to the neighbors. We're focused on the impacts to public services, and in both instances, those impacts are mitigated. With regard to the standards for a DA modification, we think in this instance, we've shown that the original plan's been tried, and it's appropriate to take a shot at something different. And then as a final note, you know, while we were disappointed with the P&amp;Z recommendation, as I mentioned, we are in agreement with the staff conditions of approval that are already in the staff report with the red lines that were included. So we are, we're not asking for any changes to those staff conditions. So with that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Heath, I just wanted to explore the traffic issue a bit. It sounds like that's kind of a point of contention with what I've read. You know, when the traffic, I noticed you said when the traffic study was done, it did reduce the number of trips, and, you know, that was the original entitlement, but, you know, that was for something that never existed. So now we're dealing with traffic, and one of the things I read there was the fact that there might be someday a light at Movado and Overland, and if there is, the offset requirements, if it's signalized, will not be met. Do you have a plan B? I mean, that's kind of a situation where we're flowing that traffic, and if they do signalize it, can you give me your, share your thoughts with me on that?
Yeah, Mr. Member, Counselmember Hoagland, so I think you're asking kind of two different questions there. The first is, you know, the, maybe it makes sense to back up and talk about how the original traffic impact study was done, and then proceed from there to present day. So the original traffic study was done based on the overall entitlement. That overall entitlement included X number of residential uses plus 56,000 square feet of commercial. And as with any traffic impact study, there's an ITE trip generation schedule, and folks plug those numbers in. And speaking of crystal balls, that's how they end up with the traffic generation that ACHD studies and then uses to determine what kind of mitigation is required at the end of everything. So that was done with the original entitlement. In this case, when we came to ACHD with a reduction by half approximately of the commercial, they looked at that and said, okay, based on the same trip generation schedules, that actually reduces the overall traffic impact by 333 trips. So in other words, as a result, we don't need you to do another traffic impact study. We don't need you to look at mitigation again because you've actually reduced your overall So with regard to the question of a future light at Overland, that would be based on background traffic that's generated and counts in these signal warrant analyses that ACHD does. If at some point ACHD determined that there's going to be a
If at some point ACHD determined that there's going to be a, a stoplight that's required there, then those two northernmost wouldn't be eliminated. They would be right in, right out. And then in that instance, folks, it primarily in our two, the, the would probably be the most affected would be the two smaller commercial buildings on the west, and those would have two options. They could either go out to the east and do a right and loop back, or they can go out through the apartments and up to, and where there's an access to Overland.
Counsel, additional questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. The, the other concern that I consistently saw with the public testimony was the use of amenities and other parts of the development by the residents in this new area. Would you be able to address that for us?
Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Pro. So each of our phases within the development include unique amenities that are, are catered to the type of person or type of user that would, were hoping to buy, buy homes there. So in other words, they all stand on their own. They all provide their, their own amount of amenities. In this case, we expect that our users are only going to be using the amenities in this location because they're targeted for those folks. It's all part of one master association, so we can explore whether there would be common use, but our anticipation is that they're going to stick to the amenities that are being provided here.
Mr. Mayor. Counselmember Burton.
Talk to me about what these townhomes, like the design standard that you'll be using in regard to the materials, you know, the finishes, what they're going to look like. And the reason I ask that question is it's not uncommon, I would say, where maybe sometimes the design standard isn't quite up to par to what maybe we spoke about at a council meeting, and they're built, and they look terrible. And so Movado is a nice subdivision. I mean, I've drove past it, drove inside it. It's nice. It's not, everything about it's really nice. Mr. Conger's done a great job over there with his building team, and so I, I would like some assurances, and that was, hence the question earlier, wanting to know what these townhomes are going to look like and what type of finishes were going to be used, and so do you guys have anything to show tonight, what that is going to be like, or what, what that's going to be?
Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Burton, so I, just to be clear, because these are all attached residential product or commercial, we're subject to design review on both. So the city is going to have an opportunity to review all of that, and so we're going to develop a design that is going to be complementary to, to the rest of this, of the subdivision. We're not going to cut off our nose despite our face.
I would never, and I, and you know, I, I apologize. I didn't mean to say that, you know, there was a potential of, you know, Conger, you know, who else, the builder, whoever is going to be building, I'm not saying that there's a lack of trust by, I hope I didn't, I hope I didn't come across that way. If I did, I apologize. It's more like, I just want to know. I, I don't know if I could say it any different than that.
Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Burton, it's, like I say, the city's going to get another shot to look at it, and it's going to be as high quality as the rest of Movado.
That's all perfect. That's all I had to say.
There you go.
All right.
Councilman Burton.
Real quick question. Heath, when I look at the previously adopted or approved plan to the issue of access on the Movado and the fact that it could become right in, right out if, if it's lit, it appears as though that same concern already would exist with the plan as previously approved. With, you know, you may head to the west through the apartments to the access to Overland. So that concern seems to be the same here as it already exists. Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Burton, yeah, that's the status quo.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel, Mr. Schrader.
Well, thank you, Mr. Clerk. One of the comments that came up in Planning and Zoning was about the integration of uses and sort of seeing that true mixed use. Can you talk to me about how you're trying to address that here with this current design?
I guess, Mr. Mayor, Counselmember Schrader, thanks for the question. So in terms of integration of uses, you know, sometimes that's a kind of an eye of the beholder type of a thing, obviously. This, the current status quo, right, are the existing approval has single-level duplexes with a fence, and then because it's a CG zone, if you were to put any commercial development just north of that, there's at least a 25-foot buffer.